Put up like four thousand ton this year and he said.
What's that say?
He put up like four thousand tons and.
Oh, I thought you meant he was selling out for the farmer to say what happened?
No.
I did see, oh, I did see where the they're looking at your emergency aid.
Do we, uh?
What, the federal government?
USDA. I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but last.
Did we need to adjust something that was on here?
Yes, the minutes, no, we're just gonna pass it.
But didn't we need to change a resolution thing?
Nope.
Okay.
Good morning. We are here for the regular scheduled commissioner meeting. It's Wednesday, October eighth. We have a full slate of commissioners. We have our administrator, Mr. Danzel, and our clerk of the board. So at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the adoption of the current agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Been a motion of second to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment? Is there anybody on the phone? Nobody's coming to the mic, so we'll move down to the approval of the consent agenda, which has fifteen items on it today.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of consent agenda items one through fifteen as presented.
Second.
Been a motion of second for the fifteen consent items. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Takes us down to regular business. Presentation semi-annual report of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Economic Resilience Grant, presented by Christine Eby, Grant Navigator, and Michelle Hoyt, Executive Director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Michelle. I don't think we have Christine or is she?
No, Kristen is unfortunately down with the flu today, so I am gonna pinch hit for both of us.
Well, we'll wish her the best and heal fast.
Yes, I said, please, please, keep those germs away. Nobody wants those. So this is our semi-annual update to the commission for the ARPA funding that the two counties have provided to BF COG over the last, what was originally going to be two years. It actually has stretched into three years now into the end of twenty-five. So we're in our final quarter of that funding, but this is our update for the first half of 2025. All right. So I'll just skip ahead again. We formed this agreement and are very appreciative of the financial support that the counties have provided to us to continue our work, looking at researching and identifying projects and recovery funding, facilitating technical assistance support, anything we can do to help make grant-eligible projects fundable, and then coordinating specifically with the Economic Development Administration to support EDA plans and funding and how we might help create new opportunities. So under technical support, we attend many meetings throughout the two counties on a regular basis to stay apprised of what's happening with the economy as a whole, economic development, and again, where there might be projects or support that either planning or funding access might add to. I think the most significant change that we've brought about in the last year was the hiring of our Grant Navigator role and the technical support that Kristen has been able to provide. I'm sad she's not here to talk about her efforts today, but for the first half of this year, she's been able to share forty-three notices of funding opportunities. That is the tip of the iceberg of notices that come out. So she spends a significant amount of time reviewing and researching potential funding sources, which align to the projects and activities that our member jurisdictions have let us know are important to them or an area of need. Most of these funding sources include webinars and other information that you sit through to be able to figure out how complicated are they to apply for? How competitive are they gonna be? Are they gonna be worth the effort? And so by she, by Kristen investing that time, it's saving all of our jurisdiction staff from having to spend a lot of that time to narrow down some of these sources and even figure out, are they worth having a conversation and submitting applications?
Is it okay, Michelle, if we have questions to ask during the presentation?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
My question is, has Franklin County been in touch and working with Kristen? And who is the person, the point person from Franklin County?
Shirley, Shirley Jones is our point, is our point person. Shirley's actually met several times directly with Kristen, and I know one of the areas they're, they're looking at is funding to support municipal buildings. There's some need for expanded space here for Franklin County, and what can we identify as possible sources for that?
I know that Commissioner Mullen sits on the crab board, but is there grant funding also for roadways and for pullouts? We're looking for an avenue. I just witnessed this, this, the other day, we were moving a loader, and there was a combine behind us, and a fully loaded onion truck tried to pass the combine on a hill.
Uh-huh, tried to be.
And it met the sheriff vehicle.
Oh, jeez.
Coming the other way. The sheriff vehicle had to get off the road to let this truck go around this combine and got immediately pulled over, and I'm very thankful for that. But we have got to find some funding to create these turnouts so they can keep moving up the road at twenty mile an hour and let the traffic get by, especially during harvest. We're just seeing way too many close calls, and we got grandkids that are gonna start driving, and we wanna make sure our roadways are safe.
I can't answer that question off the top of my head, but I will get with both Kristen and our MPO staff to see if there are some additional programs we can look at for that specific source of funding.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We, at the beginning of this year, we actually hosted a federal grant facilitation training program for the region in cooperation with the Department of Commerce. And Shirley did come and participate in that training with Kristen as well. So they are having good communication. Additionally, the cities of Mesa and Cornell have been actively working with Kristen. I know she'll be actually going to the Mesa Council meeting this month to talk to them specifically about a park program and a rural communities grant that might be helpful for them. So overall, it's been a wonderful program. The focus of, of member technical assistance, especially for funding, has centered around transportation, parks, municipal buildings, and law enforcement primarily. We host our bimonthly Congressional Connections meetings. We've been doing that for about two years now, where we create that opportunity for the federal delegation staff. They all come together and provide a chance for our jurisdictions to schedule thirty minutes of time with all, all of the federal delegation staff together. That includes the representative from Congressman Baumgartner's office as well. Those have been very well attended and supported. We did have the city of Mesa participate in our last session as well. Additionally, at, at the request of the federal delegation staff, we are hosting a separate meeting for state representatives as well so that they can have an opportunity to visit as they have time. They'd like us to do that for them twice a year. Our Brownfields Coalition Assessment Grant, the first grant we received was six hundred thousand dollars. We received that the end of 2021, and we have just completed that first grant cycle and submitted our final reports last week. So under that program, in, in the areas, we did three brownfield inventories and area-wide plans, one for downtown Kennewick, one for downtown Richland, one for downtown Pasco. So specifically, working in concert with the city of Pasco's downtown plan to look at redevelopment and identify properties that could be eligible for Brownfields funding. Overall, we had nine sites that we were able to do assessments for. In Franklin County, that included the former Thunderbird Motel property. After the city had demolished the building there, we went in and did a redevelopment plan for the city to provide them some market information and options for how that property might be utilized for something other than just additional parking. We also did Phase One and Phase Two assessments on two additional properties as well.
And for the betterment of the, our audience that might be listening and our commissioners, will you explain the brownfield?
Absolutely. So a brownfield is any property that is suspected of having contamination. And contamination could be anything from, it's, the most common things you think of is it maybe a former gas station or a dry cleaner, but it also could be agricultural land that had previously had pesticide use on it. It could have been a property that you just have unknown history, and so it might make those properties of concern or harder to resell because the buyer's not quite sure what they might get into when they purchase the property. So what this program does is it allows us to do those initial assessments, a Phase One or a Phase Two environmental assessment or a regu, a regulated building materials survey. We can do site-specific redevelopment plans. If, if a property is known to have contamination, it can actually develop the, develop the cleanup plan up to the point of actually paying for the cleanup. Then there's other programs that we can approach for that. The only real barrier to accessing this program is that there is a local coalition committee that determines the economic development potential of a piece of property. So we wouldn't just assess any piece of property. We, we would wanna look at by remediating it and putting it back into circulation, how would that help the economy of the region?
Thank you.
Thank you. So we were fortunate enough to receive a new one-point-two-million-dollar Brownfield Assessment Grant. We just received the final award information last week, so we'll be able to start work under that new program beginning in January. We're just getting ready to source the consulting firm that helps do that assessment work for us. This new grant, we have new, new partners. There were, were shifts in focus at the EPA for this grant cycle, and so housing was an important piece for them, as well as we partnered with the large cities on the first grant. So this one, our coalition partners are City of Cornell, City of Prosser, City of Richland actually looking out at Morrison Industrial Area. And then Habitat for Humanity has a couple of parcels in Pasco that they're going to redevelopment that were, that were former ag land. So we'll be able to support the assessments to help convert those for housing as well. Again, how this grant works is, is those coalition partners were required to do two projects in each of those cities or with those partners, and then any other piece of property in the two-county area could be eligible to have assessment work done, especially given that now we have double the amount of funding we had last time. I am, have zero concerns that if there are properties that we identify that would, would like assistance, we'll be able to support those. So that's pretty exciting.
Question for you on the Brownfields thing. It's recently been in the news, the Vista Field area and the PCBs that were found in the soil there. Could you speak to that? Is this Brownfield study something that would identify something like that?
Had Vista Field not already done their assessments, yes, this program would have been something that we could have actually paid for and provide the consultant to do those assessments for them. And then if they, in fact, had remediation that needed to be done, this funding could theoretically be involved in, in that plan for what remediation might need to look like. So absolutely.
So we're in the middle of, of updating some contracts we have for land that we lease as a county. Our Public Works facility that we lease from the Port of Pasco and, excuse me, indemnification, you know, insurance indemnification is something that's been brought to the forefront of recent for numerous different reasons. And as we are working on that contract, that's one thing that, that they're wanting us to indemnify them for, you know, contamination on that site. That site was used for stuff, a lot of things, you know, back when it was the, the former Naval Air Station. And so I don't exactly know how to ask my question. Jeff, maybe you can help me form this question of, of, is this something that we should, should have a Brownfield study done on that site in order to evaluate as we approach a new contract on that?
So what I would say is that we would definitely want to nominate it and have the consulting firm and the EPA then go through and look at the, basically the desktop Phase One information to make sure who might have been responsible for the contamination, because that does play a factor into whether we can use the grant funding to do the assessments or not. This sounds very similar to some of the properties that we have done assessments on for the city of Richland that were originally owned by the Department of, Department of Energy and then gifted to the city. If by assessing the, the property to determine whether there's contamination or not is going to enable the county to then sell or redevelop the property to support economic development, it absolutely meets the basic criteria of what this kind of program would be for. So I would say definitely we would wanna at least put together the nomination form and make sure it meets that minimum threshold, but I, it sounds like it should.
It's, it's port-owned property that we lease from them for our public facility, our Public Works facility. And I don't know, how, how fast, how long does it take to do a Brownfield study? Say we start today, is this a six-month, is it a twelve-month?
It really depend, well, in, in, in today's scenario, you're probably looking at six months because I won't have a contractor sourced and ready to go to be able to start doing assessments till probably February. Once we have them on board, the approval process generally takes a week or two. It's pretty fast. And then it's just a question of scheduling the, the contractor. Since I don't know who the contractor will be, I can't really use our historic information to tell you how quickly they can get that done. But for at least the Phase One environmentals, those generally take less than thirty days. And the Phase Twos, that really depends on how much anticipated testing they have to bring in and, you know, what kind of specialists they're doing.
Okay. Anything, Jeff, you wanna add to that? Kind of is, I'm not sure fully how to ask the question.
Right.
The six months would be problematic for us, but.
I think, well, and we're, because we're just leasing the property, I, I don't know that we'd have authority to, to request a study on it.
So you, you could nominate it as the leasie, but we would have to have authorization from the, the owner of the property, which would be the port. We have, the port's very familiar with this property as well. And I would say just theoretically, the only reason a property owner would not want to have the assessments done is that, of course, once you know what's there, now someone has to deal with what's there. I won't say that's the situation for the port. They're generally very proactive about dealing with those kinds of things for their properties. But that has been a barrier for this program is that there are so many properties that are eligible, but the question is really, once you know, you can't unknow, so, yeah.
And I guess my question would be, would there be a way to tell of the responsibility of something that was there, if it was our fault or the previous occupant's fault?
What I've, you know, what I've seen with, with some of the work that they've done in the past, I mean, you, you, I don't think you can definitively say, but looking at the past uses, the type of contamination, the chain of ownership on the property, which is part of what they do under that Phase One, going back as far as they can in the records, that can generally help with some of those indications.
Okay.
Okay, so we're excited about Brownfields. We didn't put a slide in here, but I did want to tie back to the, oh, let me find it. Oh, yes, the, the broadband activities that the, the COG did. So back in 2023, this project has dragged on for a while, the state had contacted the COG to do a broadband assessment plan, one for Franklin County, one for Benton County, in order to enable private sector or public sector entities that wanted to apply for the BEAD funding broadband, broadband equity deployment grant funding. We had to have a plan for the counties in order for anybody to be eligible. And the state had received one-point-two-billion dollars federally to expand broadband to unserved or underserved areas. Fast forward, we did the plans, people were able to apply. The application processes have finally closed after many, many extensions. And initial awards have been granted. So in Franklin County, eight million seven-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars in grant funding has been awarded to SpaceX and INLAND were the two award recipients to do the broadband service work for identified areas in Franklin County. At this point, that's all I know is who was awarded. So from my perspective, yay, we enabled eight million dollars to be spent in Franklin County to hopefully extend broadband, which is great for economic development. Other than that, that's the only piece of that we have, and I don't know anything more than yay, somebody's gonna get money, and broadband infrastructure is going to happen. That's all I know. But as I know more, I'll share that.
SpaceX.
SpaceX is a, I think it's a sister company to Tesla. It's one of Elon Musk's companies, and they actually do more satellite internet.
Yes.
So for the extra-rural areas where.
I'm bringing this up because this is exactly where we need to go with our emergency radios.
Hmm, yeah. Well, there you go. Somebody's gonna be here doing work, and maybe we can see if there's a way to parlay off of that.
Interesting.
But I'm always excited when we actually have a, a, a concrete opportunity to point to a planning activity that happened that actually enabled money. Yay, makes it all worthwhile. One of the other economic recovery or development activities we were able to participate in the first half of this year was the Ag Innovation Project. You have maybe heard about that. So the Tri-City Strategic Alliance, that is the Regional Chamber of Commerce, Visit Tri-Cities, Tri-Deck, and the COG. We partner together to look at larger-scale potential economic projects, and we've each picked one that we are taking lead on. The Regional Chamber is an ag innovation center of some kind. There's been efforts to look at it, and we had a group of ten people that traveled down to Davis, California. We visited UC Davis, their Integrative Center for Alternative Meat and Protein. It's called ICAMP. That was actually really kind of interesting food science. The Mandavi Institute for their winery research. But an incubation center called Ag Start. And really looking at what did they do in order to start connecting with the ag community for whether it was food development, technology and innovation, and what did that look like? I have to say, having gone and visited with the folks there and learned more about what they did, it really completely changed the focus of this committee as far as the approach they were originally thinking to take, the time it might take to really begin to build a foundation for strong support for innovation to support ag entrepreneurs. So since returning from that trip, the committee is now kind of rethinking, what's, what's the right way to start? What's the right kind of focus? Nobody has changed their mind that there's huge opportunities to influence the overall economy by supporting ag entrepreneurs. It's like a lot of things in economic development. It's just, how do you pick the right place to start and the right thread to pull in order to move forward?
What bothers me is the alternative meat and protein.
Yeah, you know, part, one of their, one of their presentations that was super interesting, and again, they just presented to us the kinds of things that they were doing. But this one, they were talking about that worldwide, even if we doubled the amount of animal-related protein availability in, in the world, it would not be enough to meet the world food needs. And so they're looking at things like mushrooms and other kinds of, you know, more plant-based proteins and versus cattle-type alternatives. So the research they're doing is super interesting. Not necessarily what the focus here would be, but it was more for us to find out, how did they pull those coalitions together? What did they do for funding? How do they do, you know? So it was definitely fascinating. And also, I think, a really great opportunity for a broad group of people in the region to collaborate together to just go and explore how could people be good partners to spark some, some development. So overall, I feel like that was a really worthwhile endeavor. We'll see where it goes.
Okay.
So we completed our most recent five-year Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDS. We produced that for the Economic Development Administration for our Economic Development District here, which has been in Franklin Counties. It is a requirement that your community have a SEDS plan in order for people to be able to apply for EDA funding of any kind. So this is one of those activities that the COG does that meets that base threshold criteria, enabling people to be able to access funding through those programs. We did make a couple of changes this year with the SEDS. One was we highlighted key development areas throughout the two counties to really kind of showcase where development is happening and strategically what it's focusing on. So of course, that included in Franklin County, the AIM Center, Big Pasco, the Ryman Industrial Center, the Cornell Commercial Development Area, and North Pasco Development Areas as a showcase. I think the most important part of the SEDS for us is the, is the Projects Appendix. That's where all of our jurisdictions bring, bring forward the list of those development projects they would like to be able to invest in, but are going to need to access state or federal funding in order to do that. By being listed in the SEDS, it gives them that independent third-party plan that says these projects are regionally significant, which is a basis for a lot of applications for funding. Be like, why should we pick your project over some other projects? Well, it's regionally significant. Overall, there were a hundred and four total projects listed in the SEDS with a funding need of one billion dollars. If they were able to have enough money to fund everything that our communities would like to do, that was the price tag. So there's definitely not a shortage of need for support to identify funding. There were thirty-one projects total listed related to Franklin County as a whole, including City of Pasco, Cornell, and the Port of Pasco. My last, my last just request for you all, or my hope, is that you've seen communications. is that you've seen communications from us about our upcoming future 2075 event coming up on November 7th. As the Council of Governments, one of the things that's most important to us is that collaboration between all of our local government entities. And this is really being built by our staff as an opportunity for us to practice what we preach in building trust and communication amongst both the staff and elected officials who are able to be there to work together throughout the region. We know that there are times that if we speak with one voice as our two-county region, we can have a much greater influence. You know, we're the third-largest metro in the state within the geographic boundary of Washington. And we don't do a good job of leveraging that weight as the third-largest metro when we're advocating for funding, support, or just needing that voice for our two-county area. So, I'm really excited and frankly, I'll be a little bit nervous too about this event. If it, if it turns out to be everything we have hoped and planned it will be, I, I want everybody to leave feeling like it was absolutely worth their time and effort to come and be there. So, I would hope and ask that at least one of you would be able to make the time to be there with us for that day. It would be great to have Franklin County's voice at the table. I do know Craig is planning to be there as Public Works, but we've invited the Public Works Director, Economic Development, City Manager, County Administrator, and at least one elected official from every one of our member jurisdictions to participate.
Can you give us the date of that again?
November 7th.
November 7th.
So, our registration deadline is October 23rd. So, we've got another week or two. And I think we'll have a little bit more communication coming out over the next couple of weeks as well, but we would love that, if you would consider it.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was concerned whenever you shared about the, the $8 million, but you don't know what it's being used for. Could you explain that a little further? You've, the COG has, has received and allocated over $8 million in, in funding to Franklin County, but you don't know what it's being used for?
Oh, no, no, no. We haven't allocated it. So, as part of the process with the State of Washington for the broadband office under Department of Commerce, plans were, were required in order to enable people to apply for funding under that broadband accessibility program to provide infrastructure. So, we did the initial plan, which was providing economic data and a bunch of background details that they needed in order for there to be a plan. It was more identifying the areas that had low, low or no broadband accessibility, et cetera. So, we did that part. And then through the, the broadband action team for the county, we continued to monitor the process under Department of Commerce. We had entities, like I know Franklin PUD really intended quite, for quite a while, to be one of those applicants. And the matching funds and requirements that went along with trying to apply for the funds just made it impossible. So, unfortunately, because of how their process works, we only know what the Department of Commerce has released as far as who did apply and what areas they are going to serve and what kind of infrastructure they're, they're planning to put in. And we haven't been able, we haven't seen anything except the announcement that said these were the entities that were selected and how much money was allocated. So, we weren't part of the allocation process or the applications at all. We're just still monitoring it from the point of we, we helped make, being able to apply possible, and now we're waiting to see what happens for our counties.
That's really helpful, having that additional context.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for that. One, one other question, the Ag Innovation Center.
Yeah.
Has that been cited yet?
No.
Location and that type of thing? Is there a goal in mind? Is there, there a, do they, is it, is it developing? And we've been hearing about it for a number of years.
You know, I, I think one of the resets that actually happened from this visit to Davis and a better context for the group is that, yes, we really got kind of caught up on this idea of a place and a thing. And what we really realized is that is very, very far ahead of the cart before the horse in terms of, of this committee. The Ag Start folks in Davis, you know, they were working with their ag innovation entrepreneurs for 10 years before they even leased a small incubator space and started working with entrepreneurs. And so, the idea of jumping right into an actual brick-and-mortar facility is, is a little ahead of, inspirationally where we are contextually for, for, for work. So, no, there, there's not any specific citing. Now, I do know that Port of Pasco is doing a lot of work around ag innovation and a potential facility. And, and I know they see that potentially working hand-in-glove with any of these long-range plans from the Ag Committee. But that's all I know about that right now.
Do you know, you may not know the answer to this question. How does, how does the work of an ag innovation center, how does it differ from like our Extension Office? What, what would be the, the reason to have two different organizations verse, versus empowering the one that already exists and a structure that already exists and making it, you know, more impactful?
The Extension Office staff are involved on the committee and engaged. And so, I know they are specifically aware of what their limits are, either in the university setting or under USDA funding. There are certain areas that they can work and certain areas that they can't work. And so, I think that's part of that visioning is where are the gaps in services and support now and how can we build on those? So, absolutely, they're doing fantastic work. But, but again, I think that's where the concept is awesome. And we're just lacking a lot of that, that background information to fill out exactly where is the need, exactly which entrepreneurs are we trying to reach and why? And some of that may be just continuing to build out the connectivity between that, that ecosystem as a whole.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mullin? I want to thank you very much, Michelle, for your presentation and update. And on that grant money that Commissioner Brownman asked you about, what was the matching funds that the PUD couldn't come up with?
You know, I don't remember. And, and it was a, it's been a while since I had that conversation with the staff person that's on our, our bat. And so, I really can't, I really can't tell you for sure.
Was it for all 8 million?
It would depend on which, which properties they were applying to do, provide service to. So, even how much money was available to any county or area in the state, it was pretty vague.
Okay.
You know, so, yeah, I really can't speak.
It's something that I think we should be maybe looking at for our emergency radios, that we, we have this organization put together. And I know we have funds that we have allocated, which would save us some money if we didn't have to spend all those funds, if we had to come up with some matching funds to get that 8 million.
Yeah, yeah.
It would help us immensely.
And I do know that there was a, there was, the, the primary focus for serving properties was to extend broadband fiber lines. And then they only defaulted to a satellite-based potential solution in the areas where it was just absolutely, completely cost prohibitive to think about doing.
And that's what we're looking at is up in northern, up by Kalodas area where the hills are, in that line of sight. We need something off of a satellite for our emergency responders and our sheriffs.
I suspect that we will be able to have access to more information as their process develops. Like I said, they, they've just put out an initial announcement and that's it. So, we can definitely continue to gather contact information, who's going to be working in our area and exactly what, what are they doing? And is there an opportunity to partner to support some other efforts?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. It's always good to come and see you.
All right, we'll move down the agenda. Our next is 2026 Benefits presented by Matt Henderson. And we have a request for consensus here. Welcome, Matt.
Hi there, good to see you all.
Good to see you.
I wish that I come bearing just wonderful news. It's an easy decision and a quick meeting, but we've got a bunch to get through, so.
Okay.
Is it okay to unplug this and plug my computer in? Okay, we can put up on screen. Yeah, there's, there's nothing quite like being excited about, you know, picking up a new client and ready to dig in only to have the insurance company drop a pretty horrible renewal right in your lap that you have to deal with.
Well, and, and before we get started, I'd like to suggest that if you didn't listen to our last meeting, we had WASAC in here. And they are creating, we're going to still need you, but they are creating a big group of the whole state for insurance purposes. And I think it'd be wise for you to check that out, reach out to them.
Absolutely.
And that might help us even more on saving money here in Franklin County.
Absolutely. In fact, one of the questions that came up in the last Benefit Committee meeting, which was yesterday, is, you know, what, what all options are we going to look at for the future to help kind of stop the bleeding, so to speak? And the simple answer is every option that's on the table. We were kind of, kind of pigeonholed a little bit this year into really having to stick with Primera mostly because of the timeline of when they finally delivered our renewal to us. That question came up a little bit in the meetings. Well, we were dealing with this a month ago last year. Why are we just dealing with this now? And that's the simple answer. Primera didn't, they, insurance companies, they, when they're going through all their renewals, they assign a working month to a whole list of groups. Okay, this is the month we're going to have these 100 groups go through underwriting and get the renewal. So, what we've asked them to do is to move that to August next year rather than September, just so that we can have a lot more time to really vet and look at options. So, the, the good news is, you know, we do have some options that we can discuss, even in the context of staying with Primera. We've spent a lot of time in the Benefits Committee, Committee Meetings on education, in particular around the options that I am bringing forward to really consider, that will take a big dent out of what the renewal is. The initial renewal Primera presented us was basically 30%. I think it was 28.9 or something like that. I mean, it was a big, big jump. So, I'll, I'll put some stuff on the screen that'll talk a little bit about why. So, there's some good understanding there. And then, you know, we were able to negotiate down to about 23% before we then start looking at alternate plan design options, which is what we'll spend the bulk of the time looking at today, which just gets, gets us down even further. So, sharing one screen, but not the other. That's interesting. How do I do that? While we're doing this, I really want to thank Lizette and the HR Department for helping herd all the cats on the Benefits Committee to keep us all organized and, and on track. And definitely those who are on the committee as well for their participation and thoughtful discussion as we go through this. What we've got up on the screen, some reporting from Primera. This is just your year-to-date premium earned versus the paid claims. If we look all the way down to the bottom, through September, they've collected $2.83 million in premium. And you can see that's what's been paid out for the medical, dental and the vision. This is, this is the, a big number to me, the prescription payout. I mean, it's representing, what would that be? Between medical and, and, you know, factoring out the dental and vision, just looking at the medical and the prescription, it's about 40 to 45% of your spend is just on prescription drugs. When I was a baby in this business, if we had groups that were spending more than 12%, 15%, whoa, those are, those are running hot. It's not at all uncommon to see this much being spent just on prescriptions. And then next to that, the total spend, and you're at just over 100% loss ratio with Primera. So, for every dollar that they, they're taking in in premium, they're paying out just over a dollar in claims. That's the biggest factor on why they're needing to increase premiums. I, I think I mentioned previously, I sit on Primera's Broker Advisory Committee, and we had a meeting last week, our quarterly meeting. And they shared some, some kind of shocking data with us, looking at Primera as a whole, claim trend utilization, that some things that are really jumping out. They shared with us that through the first half of this year, their, their claims in all of Primera's ecosystem for inpatient hospital stays was up 27%.
Say that again?
Their, their, their spend on hospital claims was up over 27% just in the first six months of this year compared to historical. Since coming out of COVID, it's been, been pretty flat. It might be up 2% or 3%, down 2% or 3%, and then all of a sudden, there's this big spike. Claims on the outpatient charges, which is you're not actually admitted to the hospital, is up over 10%. Claims on professional charges, which is all the doctors, you know, their, their charges, is up 8.5%. So, we're just seeing this big uptick, uptick in claims across the board, which is why we're seeing across the board the highest average renewal increases that myself and my team have had to deal with in my whole career. And I kind of predicted this a couple of years ago, coming out of COVID. I was just a little early in when I predicted we would see this. So, the couple of things driving that, one is just healthcare inflation. Hospitals, doctors, facilities, labs, they're just charging more. So, as they charge more, insurance companies have to collect more to cover those increased costs. You know, the whole proposition of a preferred provider network, back into the early 70s when this model was adopted, was to have, to, to contain costs. You know, we're going to contract with a specific group of providers and a specific group of hospitals so that we get discounts off of their billed charges. And it's going to save our clients money, save on insurance premium. In my estimation, that's a failed model to contain costs because it's a percentage off of billed charges. All providers have to do is increase billed charges, and, and both lines are just, are doing this. So, we're seeing a, a big chunk of that. The interesting thing that they shared with us was the impact on, of AI on medical billing systems that are able to look at all the different chart notes that every nurse, every doctor, everyone who interacts with that patient puts into their, their system and kind of, for lack of a, a better term, smash them all together and figure out where they can upcharge and charge more money for the same services. The example they gave was childbirth. When a, I'll bring that back on in just a sec. When a baby's born and they're taking all the vital signs and all the measurements and doing the blood work, if anything points to a, a trigger that might send that baby to the neonatal intensive care unit, whether or not the baby actually went there, it's upcharged and charged as though the baby did. Even if the baby is charged at the exact same timeframe a, a normal, healthy baby would have been. So, there's a huge new scrutiny that, that not just Primera, but all the insurance companies are, are putting on, really evaluating those charges to try to rein that in. It's, it's a little bit scary to think about. So, okay, enough commentary. Let's get into the.
So, a question for you on what you, what you presented. So, this, this number right here.
Yes, the prescription.
So, I'm not sure how to, fully how to ask my question. But if you go buy a Ford pickup, a dealership, if they sell 20 pickups, at the end of the year, they get a, they get a refund or a incentive from Ford. And if they sell 100, then it's a little bit bigger and if they, so, I think my question is, so right here, we're identifying that, that we're just over 100% paid.
Correct.
However, does the insurance company get a kickback on that? So, is this right here an actual accurate number? Whenever, when all the, when all the dust settles, that can't be fully accurate.
That's a very good question, and you're spot on. Those are rebates from the pharmaceutical manufacturers. So, that's a great segue into the next slide, which is the top, you know, the top claimants. Your first two highest-paid claims are both for pharmacy. And this is just through, through September. So, one at $286,000, one at $256,000.
This is inside of our pool.
Inside of your pool, okay? So, my estimation is the rebate paid back to Primera on that $286,000. two hundred eighty-six thousand dollar claim is probably sixty to seventy thousand dollars from the manufacturer of that prescription.
So if we expounded that across the two, we're at between a hundred and a hundred and twenty thousand. So the four hundred thousand paid out minus a hundred thousand is three hundred, which is actually seventy-five percent of paid claims versus a hundredth percent.
Right. And you do not get credit for that shown up on these reports. This is just gross paid claims. Now, Primera will say, we factor that in when we're rating your renewal. So they, they claim that they subtract all those rebates out of your total cost to come up with the net cost. Again, this is all behind the scenes.
But they won't show us the actuals?
No, this is, the insurance companies make a tremendous amount of money on the pharmacy rebate side of the equation.
So your next slide is going to show us how that we get a portion of that?
Well, I, that won't be in this presentation, but if, if you ever move into a self-insured model, you directly get the benefit of all those. All of those pharmacy rebates are paid directly back into the county to offset cost of the plan.
So...
That's the only way to, to actually see the benefit of pharmacy rebates.
So using approximate numbers in, in the year that we're discussing right here, that number is valued at roughly a hundred thousand dollars?
Probably more, probably a lot. Well, definitely a lot more because the next slide is just your top thirty prescriptions by cost. So you can see that the two at the top, the big numbers, still some big numbers, and then it starts to, to taper off pretty rapidly. But there's going to be rebates connected to every one of these. Um, they, they keep the actual rebates pretty close to the vest. So I'll, I'll just, our clients that are self-insured, we have a decent idea as an average percentage, and it's twenty-five to thirty percent of rebates.
And, and we were just short of a million dollars in RX.
Yeah.
And so that would be a, roughly a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah. That's correct.
If we were self-insured.
That's correct. That's correct. So the next thing I want to bring up, just a little bit of an education piece, because this is going to tie into ultimately the option that I want to... There we go. Uh, want to visit about. And it's just the way health insurance works, and I apologize of the, the elementary nature of this, but, um, in my experience, there's still just a real big understand, misunderstanding of exactly how health insurance works relative to what your costs are when you seek care. So I always encourage people to think of your healthcare costs in a vertical column with zero dollars at the bottom and infinity up at the top. And that's what we've got represented on the screen. The first part of the expense is your deductible. That's the amount that you pay. And what we're using to model is your current, uh, one thousand dollar deductible plan in this example. After you satisfy that thousand dollar deductible, then you go into that co-insurance layer. That's a shared cost. You pay a portion, the insurance company pays a portion. In this case, it's an eighty-twenty split. Primera pays eighty percent, you pay twenty percent, until your out-of-pocket costs roll up to your out-of-pocket maximum. And on this plan, it's five thousand dollars. That five thousand dollar out-of-pocket maximum includes the deductible. So it's not a thousand plus another five thousand. It's five thousand is your out-of-pocket maximum. What also goes into that out-of-pocket maximum is any copay that you pay for office, fits, prescription, excuse me, prescription drugs, et cetera. But those chip away at the out-of-pocket maximum from your top down. They don't go towards your deductible, but they do, do go towards that out-of-pocket maximum. So what I'm, I'm proposing for consideration is adopting a little bit different plan design, still within Primera, and that's to introduce, uh, an HRA, Health Reimbursement Arrangement. Do not confuse this with the VIBA. They are two very, very, very separate and distinct things. The HRA in this context is bolted directly to your health insurance plan, and it's used to reimburse a portion of the deductible, just the deductible, unlike the VIBA, which can be used for premium, it can be used for out-of-pocket costs, et cetera. This is just married to your health plan. So what I'm proposing is we get rid of the thousand dollar deductible and the two thousand dollar deductible health plan. Get rid of them. Put everybody onto the thirty-five hundred dollar deductible plan and use that HRA to bring those deductibles back down to that thousand and two thousand dollar level. And you'll see the impact on cost in a, in a slide or two. So what that represents, on the, on the left-hand side, we've got that same graphic that we had on the other slide. And now within the HRA, that deductible of thirty-five hundred is broken into two parts. Anyone enrolled on that plan pays the first thousand, just like they do on the traditional plan. Then the HRA pays dollars one thousand and one, all the way up to that thirty-five hundred dollar deductible. So once you're in that HRA layer, you can think of that as having a hundred percent coverage because a hundred percent of expenses subject to your deductible are reimbursed by that HRA. Then that thirty-five hundred dollar deductible with Primera is satisfied, then you go into the co-insurance layer, that eighty-twenty split, until you hit your out-of-pocket maximum. And on the thirty-five hundred dollar plan, that out-of-pocket maximum is seven thousand dollars. But remember, that out-of-pocket maximum includes the deductible, the lion's share of which was paid through the HRA. So that's what we're looking to illustrate on the upper, upper portion. So your net, we, we, when we're talking about an HRA, we talk in terms of your net deductible and your net out-of-pocket maximum because that's what people enrolled on this plan care about. You know, once they really understand the plan structure. It's not what's the deductible, it's what portion of the deductible do I have to pay? And it's a thousand dollars. What portion of the out-of-pocket maximum do I have to pay? And in this case, it actually shrinks by five hundred dollars down to forty-five hundred because twenty-five hundred of that out-of-pocket maximum was paid by the HRA. So we spent a lot of time in the benefit committees, committee meetings, really kind of going through this plan structure and exactly how it works. And, um, and the analogy that I use in why it takes sometimes several, several different sessions of kind of explaining this is, I'm sure we all remember being in, in, in math class in high school, in algebra, and you're learning about quadratic equations, and your math teacher is scribbling up for all of us, well, most of us, on the chalkboard, now it's the whiteboard, exactly how to solve a quadratic equation. You're sitting in class going, I get it, that makes sense. And then you get home and you look at your homework and you're like, I don't remember any of that. So that's why it takes a couple times, a few of those benefit committee meetings to really talk through the plan structure.
So before you leave that.
Yeah.
If I understand that right, you're saying you pay the first thousand.
Yep.
Then it's thirty-five hundred. So you're up to forty-five hundred.
No, no, that thirty-five hundred includes the first thousand.
Okay. So then your share up to the seven thousand max would only be seven hundred?
Not quite. So you pay the first thousand.
Right.
The HRA pays the next twenty-five hundred.
Right.
Now you've met the deductible with Primera.
Mm-hmm.
Then you go into that eighty-twenty split.
Where that twenty percent is us, which is seven hundred dollars.
Oh, twenty, I'm sorry, yes. Twenty, seven hundred dollars of
Yes.
the remaining co-insurance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're all on the same page.
Yeah. Okay, now let's get into some spreadsheets that hopefully will not, uh, melt too many brains, including my own. Okay. So what I've got here is just your, your four health plans, your thousand dollar deductible plan, your two thousand dollar deductible plan, your thirty-five hundred dollar deductible plan, and your thirty-five hundred dollar deductible HSA-qualified plan, restructured to include an HRA. Because we can also see the, the premium at the bottom. So starting with Plan One, it's basically just what we looked up on the screen, and I've also got highlighted the differences in, in red of the copay. Because the, the thirty-five hundred dollar deductible plan would become the main plan, whatever the copays are attached to that are now your new copays. So it would go from thirty-five to forty-five. And when we see the, the bridge kind of across, that means it's the same on all plans. We're not talking about changing prescription drug coverage. That's exactly the same as it is currently. But look at the impact on cost. So your current rates, so eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars per enrollee, all the way up to twenty-four hundred for the whole family. If to just renew with Primera as is, this is what the rates would look like, up to a thousand eighteen and up to a little over three thousand dollars per family. Little over twenty-three percent increase. This rate here includes the cost of insurance with Primera, plus the cost to fund the HRA and to administer the HRA. There's a third-party administrator that, that we use to process the claims. So they, we all bake that in. So it's not this cost plus the HRA. That's included. And that brings that plan down to an eleven percent, little over eleven percent increase. Still not fun, but a heck of a lot better than the twenty-three percent that we're faced with. Essentially, it's a much more efficient plan design to get to the same net benefit, in this case, a little bit better net benefit. And so the question is, okay, yeah, but my copay's going up forty-five dollars a month. Well, looking at just the individual rate going from a thousand eighteen to nine nineteen.
They don't go up forty-five, they go up two forty-five.
Two forty-five. So ten dollar increase.
Ten dollar.
You'd have to go to the doctor ten times a month for the entire year before that ten dollar increase in your copay is suddenly not in your favor. So in my mind, the ten dollar increase is, is way down the list on, on consideration. Look at the cost differential for the whole family. It's almost five hundred dollars a month different, less expensive for the entire family under this model. How many times would you have to go to the doctor as a family at five hundred dollars a month before a ten dollar copay moved the needle? It's a pretty shocking difference. Okay? Same math on the two thousand plan. We're using the exact same underlying plan, the thirty-five hundred dollar deductible plan. So the only difference in rate is what it costs to fund the HRA piece. So there's the renewal from Primera. There it is with the HRA baked in. A little bit more of an increase than, uh, the richest plan, but still about eight percent lower than just renewing as is. And again, looking at the cost differential on the families, we're talking in the hundreds of dollars a month. So then I had to solve the dilemma of, what do we do with the thirty-five hundred dollar deductible plan? Because if that's the base plan, the people who are already on that would just be stuck with a twenty-three percent increase. So then I said, okay, Primera, show me some options with higher deductibles, in this case, a five thousand dollar deductible, that we can also blend the HRA into to bring that back down to thirty-five hundred for the people who are on the thirty-five hundred dollar deductible plan. And how does that impact rate? The other change that we were, we were, we wanted to explore is looking at a different pharmacy option. Primera has what they call their essentials formulary, which is a much more restricted formulary. The formulary is just a list of what drugs are the preferred brands versus the non-preferred brands. And there are a number of drugs that are just not covered under that formulary. And, um, if we applied that to the entire group, um, if, if, if Franklin County was on that plan last year, your pharmacy spend would have been about three hundred thousand dollars less. But it's because more high, uh, higher copays, because more brands are on the preferred, excuse me, the non-preferred list, higher copay, and there would have been sixteen people whose medications were simply not covered. That's a scary proposition. So my idea is, let's just marry that to the thirty-five hundred dollar deductible plan to save more money there. The, the net thirty-five hundred dollar deductible plan. Because I would bet dollars to doughnuts that the people who are on the medications that would have been affected by that change are already choosing the buy-up plans. People who are going to gravitate towards the thirty-five hundred dollar deductible plan view themselves as just generally healthy. Don't go to the doctor much, don't use that many prescriptions. You know, we see that when we've got so many clients with multiple plan offerings, that's where people tend to gravitate. They're just looking for the lowest cost for their family. So what I'm proposing on, on what I'm calling Plan Three to replace the thirty-five hundred is a five thousand dollar deductible plan, again, using the HRA to bring it down to that thirty-five hundred. And even in that case, the way the math works, your out-of-pocket cost is also a little bit lower on that one as well. Copays, you can see the differential there, a five dollar difference in copay, and moving to the essentials formulary, which interestingly enough, actually has a lower front-end deductible than the plan that you're on right now. That pharmacy deductible that only applies to brand-name drugs is separate from the medical deductible. Um, and on the brand-name drugs, rather than a fixed hundred and seventy-five dollar copay, it's a thirty percent copay. On the specialty medications, rather than a fixed three hundred and fifty dollar copay, it's a fifty percent copay. But again, all those accumulate towards your out-of-pocket max. And that brings that plan from a twenty-three down to a seventeen. So again, still not a fun increase to have to grapple with, but net-net, the savings is significant enough to warrant that. The real winner is the, the two people who are enrolled on the HSA plan, and maybe this will encourage more people to consider the HSA option. Um, we're proposing moving that to a fifty-five hundred dollar deductible HSA plan with an HRA, bringing that back down to the same thirty-five hundred that it is now. The only, the part of the math that is less favorable is your out-of-pocket cost does go up five hundred dollars a year, but your premiums actually go down on that plan. So rather than a twenty-three percent increase that Primera's proposing, um, for the person who's enrolling themselves and a, a child or children, it's more than three hundred dollars less per month. So I would say that five hundred dollar increase in your out-of-pocket maximum, you're still way ahead. Because you have to look at, what does it cost me annually in premium? When you're looking at the worst-case scenario, what's my annual premium cost? And what's my maximum out-of-pocket for my whole family? Add those two numbers together. And so that still, because the premium would go down, um, they end up in a better position. I'm going to pause there. If there's any questions.
Questions?
I don't know if I, well, I guess I do kind of have a question. Um, so right now, our, our pool is less than five hundred individuals.
Correct.
What the chairman referenced with, uh, WASAC that presented to us is that we could pool our, our counties and become a, a pool that, that could potentially reach seventy thousand individuals. I know that you don't, you can't give me, you know, exacts, but how much, how helpful is a large pool versus a small pool?
Depends on how dirty the pool is at the end of the day. If you're pooling together a bunch of sick groups, it's not going to do any good at all. The concept is, you're going to have, you know, in, in a random year, you're going to have ten percent of the groups in there that have just horrible loss ratios, and then they're supported by the other ninety percent. Right? But then what happens if that ten percent doesn't shift around? What, what happens if you never have your turn as the bad year and you're always supporting the groups that are having the bad year? That's where those pools have struggled in the past. Because there's, there's PEB, there's the Washington County Insurance Fund, there's a new one that, that you're talking about. Um, and, um, you know, before, uh, I mean, fifteen years ago, the county was part of a self-insured pool, a bunch of counties, and it was all self-insured. And the sick groups started pulling out because they could get a better deal fully insured for whatever reason. Uh, no, I'm sorry, I have that backwards. The healthy groups started pulling out because they get a better deal fully insured, and then you're just left with all the sick groups, and that thing just went into the death spiral and went away. So can it be beneficial? Yes.
So the larger the group, the, the more even the, the more even the, the wave?
You're taking volatility out.
Correct.
And hopefully, you're only grappling with medical trend at that point. It just increases in cost in healthcare.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's, that, that's, that's what I believed the answer to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you betcha. Other questions? So to talk quickly about, uh, the dental, Primera's asking for a fifteen percent increase on the dental. Uh, no surprise because it was running a little bit hot, too, from a loss ratio standpoint. Luckily, fifteen percent on the dental, we're talking about a seven dollar difference in the rate, and even on the family, you know, twenty-four dollars. We could go out to bid and we might get a, a lower rate, but you're getting a slight discount on the medical premium when you're bundling dental, and that would go away. So would you save enough to offset that? Probably not.
Our, our current dental, is that Delta Dental?
No, Primera. It is with Primera.
And so...
Sorry, go ahead.
Is Delta Dental a viable option for us because it's a local organization and we are a local entity?
Well, there are, there are dozens of dental carriers. I mean, the, the short answer is yes, we could get proposals from, from any of them. Um, the question is, might they save enough to offset what you would lose in discounting from Primera by bundling it? And that's where I think the answer would probably be no. Because they'll look at the claims data, too, and say, well, this is what we need to charge, given these claims, and they would probably get pretty darn close to the same number Primera's already at. And when we look at, at the, just the, the actual rates, you know, a fifty-two dollar rate for a, a dental plan with a two thousand dollar annual benefit maximum is a pretty good rate from what we see. A thirty-seven dollar rate for a thousand dollar annual max is, is a smoking rate. That's actually good. So I, I would be hesitant to go down that path because I just don't know that it would bear fruit as it sits right now. You do have the option for Willamette Dental as well, and you've got twenty-eight employees taking advantage of that. Willamette Dental is, um, is really a phenomenal option. Willamette Dental is, is really a phenomenal option for anyone who knows they need a lot of dental work done, or especially if they've got kids that need braces. You've got to go to the Willamette Dental Clinic. That's the only downside, although from what I hear, the, the one here in the Tri-Cities, everybody just raves about. So, if the benefits fair, I think we're going to really work hard to promote the Willamette option and really help people understand how that works. Because it's a fixed copay for any work you get done. Rather than, you know, on your traditional dental plan, you need a crown, it's going to be covered at fifty percent. So, if it's a twelve hundred dollar crown, you're paying six hundred bucks for it. At Willamette Dental, it's like a two hundred and forty dollar copay. So, it's way more affordable. And it's a composite rate. It doesn't matter if you're enrolled as a family or just by yourself or just you and your spouse. So, my guess is, those twenty-eight people, it's probably the full family that is enrolled on that. Vision, this one's really easy. Your current rate is just a composite flat twenty dollars. To renew as-is with no change, it actually goes down a little bit, eighty-one cents. But they've presented with some options. Option one moves it back up to nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents, and it moves your frame allowance, the frame for your glasses, from two hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars. In my mind, that's as close as you can get to a no-brainer, even though I always hesitate using the word no-brainer. And then the option that they have, which would add forty-seven cents per employee, uh, still has that increased frame allowance, and it includes what they call VSP Light Care, which is the, the coating you can get on your glasses that filters out UV, uh, which can be damaging to your eyes. So, to me, that the really easy decision is to go that route. And it's a really minimal cost differential to get that enhanced benefit so people could get that protection on their glasses. All the policies with Lincoln, there's no change in the rate on those, thankfully. Same thing with the Employee Assistance Plan. What this is here is this is just a summary rate sheet that I'll then use to help HR populate all of the different bargaining units and divisions who have all the little differentials. So, whenever what is, when, whenever what is decided on the VIBA piece and the contribution piece can just be married to that and populate it for, for them. So, really, it's just a tool for them. Looking at the net cost of the county for the medical and the dental, with the current plans, three point four million dollars for those two things combined. To take the, the increase would push that up to four point two million, so a seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar difference in cost to the county just to keep things status quo, no change. I know the challenges are going on from a budget standpoint. That was why I really wanted to get aggressive and looking at some, some alternates to help. This column is looking at the cost of the HRA and then the dental. So, it brings your blended change down to four point one two, fourteen point one two percent. So, a little over eight percent difference to, to adopt the HRA model. Now, it's important to note, this number here includes the funding of the HRA. So, not all of that is premium that goes to Primera. What we're budgeting for the HRA contribution is two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So, that goes into an account that's collected each month that our HRA administrator maintains for the county. That way, when your employees or anyone covered on the plan has an eligible claim, it's like a two-day turnaround to get them that reimbursement. I'll walk through that whole process here in just a sec. But I really want to emphasize, this number includes the cost of the HRA. So, the actual premium change, if we go to the thirty-five hundred and the five thousand with Primera and the fifty-five hundred for the HSA, they're only going to actually be collecting just under six percent additional premium. The rest is county assets. So, think of the HRA as a small self-insured layer. We are, we are purposefully over-budgeting in that layer relative to what we expect claims to be by almost double. And the reason we do that is because we want the county to start building a little reserve in that HRA claim account. That way, if you do have an odd claim year where utilization spikes for whatever reason, and that happens once every five or six years, we've got the reserve there that can absorb that. Once we set the budget in the HRA, the way our HRA administrator works, that becomes your cost basis for the year. Even if that account goes upside down, they have a feature that they've got their own pool of money that's not any client's money that then pays those claims in any given month and then pays themselves back in future contributions. So, it takes the volatility completely out of it. This whole, uh, HRA, the, the company's called the Deductible Reimbursement Company. Um, it's actually a local company. Um, if you're a fan of unlimited hydroplane racing, you'll know the name Daryl Strong. Daryl was my colleague for a long time. He, he started this company, Deductible Reimbursement Company, twenty years ago to serve all of our clients because no HRA administrator would do it quite the way we want it. Prefund the claims, hold it in an account. That way, we can turn and burn claims super, super fast. And then, all of our clients that, that use this model can start building that reserve. Um, so, all the claims for the HRA are actually handled right here in Pasco. Um, and they've said, hey, if you want our presence at the benefits fair, if you go down this path, just so people really understand how it works. And it all works off of the explanation of benefits. It's business as usual. You go to the doctor, you go to the hospital, you give them your ID card, they bill Primera. A week to ten days later, you get your explanation of benefits in the mail. That's your ticket to the HRA reimbursement. So, if you're on the, the net one thousand plan, as soon as it shows you've reached a thousand dollars towards your deductible, you submit that to Deductible Reimbursement Company and they pay you deductible dollars one thousand and one, all the way up till that deductible's satisfied with Primera. Um, we've got probably a hundred and fifty groups, most of them local, that have been using this model going back twenty years.
So, a question for you. So, this right here is deliberately conservative.
Yep.
And so, twelve months from now, that's going to have, pick a number, twenty thousand dollars in it.
Going to be more than that.
Because of the conservative evaluation, which then next year, we're going to be able to right-size it better to be more accurate.
Correct. So, if, if we get through all of our exploration of options next year, and for some reason, Primera is still the best option, and they're asking for a, another six percent increase, well, we just, we can, if we've got that big reserve, we can decrease what we're funding in the HRA. And by the time we blend those two things together, it might be three. So, um, it's a little bit of magic on how we can use those dollars to plan and stabilize costs in the future. And if you ever decide, hey, we've got a, a, a pretty sizable nest egg built up, and we want to use that as our basis to move to a self-insured plan. Those are county dollars that are held in a trust account that the Deductible Reimbursement Company manages.
Question for you.
Yeah.
We keep talking about this self-insurance. What do we need to have in an account for self-insurance? How much?
Well, I, it's not an easy question to answer because it's, all depends on, on how we structure it on the front end. I mean, you, what you need to maintain in an account is the, what's called the IBNR, incurred but not reported expenses. And there's an actual, actuarial calculation that goes into what that number is. It's generally forty-five days' worth of claims.
Okay.
Like in a very, very rough, like,
Right.
overly simplified calculation. It generally is pretty close to that. And that's accounting for the fact that, hey, people are going to the doctor, they're going to the hospital. Those providers technically have an entire year to submit claims to be paid. If it's outside of a year, you can say it's not timely filed, not covered. You've got to eat that provider. Um, but it's to account for claims that have been incurred but not yet reported to your claims administrator.
I'm just looking for a rough number. If we were to self-insure next year, and it's too late this year.
Yeah.
What would be a safe number that we would be good to go and not have to worry about going upside down?
Well, if you're, you're trending towards three million dollars' worth of claims, divide that by twelve, or divide that by three hundred and sixty-five, and multiply by forty-five.
Okay. Now, we're talking yearly, but again, I would like to see an amount in there that we could safely insure ourselves for five years.
Right.
And then we can get those rebates coming our way.
Just do a rough calculation here.
I love watching people design on the fly.
Pretty elementary, though.
And I'm, we're not going to hold you to it. This is just a rough number.
Totally. There's your number. Call it three hundred and seventy thousand.
So, if we had three million in an account, we'd be good to go for a while.
Yeah.
And if we,
Because that's basically a year's worth of claims.
Right.
And you're, you'll still be collecting each month.
Right.
But, I mean,
And we'd be getting the rebates.
You would.
They'd be coming back to us and going right back in the account.
It's usually about a six-month lag before those start to come in, because they calculate them at the end of each quarter. And then your pharmacy benefit manager takes the following quarter to calculate the rebates and send them to you.
So, if, if we were to design this and put this together, we would have an account that would be specific for our self-insurance.
Yep.
And if we were adequately funded enough, five million, we'd be set for a while.
You, yes.
And that's where I'd like to see us go.
So, if we were to project that forward, if we took the last five years, the rate increase average over five years and use that as our nexus to increase that number looking forward, we could, we could have a, a fairly accurate measure of what our increase, our trend needs to look like over the next five years in a, in a rough order of magnitude of what it would look like.
Yeah. I'd have to get that historical data from HR, but we could, we could do that. So, the last thing, um,
Mr. Ganzel has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, Matt, I'm just, uh, you and I have spoken about this, but I think it might be good for the benefit of others that it looks like, I mean, if we were, if we were doing a predictive model, everybody's going to be in some shape or form on self-insurance within the next few years anyways.
Oh, you're talking like, just across the board?
Yeah.
You know, there's currently about sixty-five percent of all employees in this country are covered on a self-insured health plan. And that number, especially since Obamacare, has just steadily grown every year. And the size of groups that self-insure has steadily come down ever since then. I bet if you look at the, what, two million lives that Primera Blue Cross insures, probably sixty, sixty-five percent of them are on self-insured plans. They're just the administrator of that self-insured plan. So, even, even in their world, when we go to their broker council meetings, they spend a lot, a lot of time talking about what they're doing on their self-insured chassis for their clients. So, it doesn't mean you'd even have to leave Primera if they end up rising to the top as, as the best choice, because you're still going to get access to the Blue Cross Blue Shield network. Because when you're self-insured, you hire a third-party administrator. You rent a preferred provider network, First Choice, Cigna, Aetna, they will rent their networks to you, so you get the discounts. So, the provider sends the claims through that network, they reprice them, send them down to your third-party administrator. And then twice a month, they send you the bill for the claims, and then they collect the money from you and they go pay the claims. And you buy that stop-loss insurance to protect you against the catastrophic individual claims and then the, the aggregate claims for your group. So, those are your fixed costs, and the variable cost is whatever the claims are.
So, one more question. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Ballen, do you have a question?
Oh, I just, um, I, I would, I would love to see that as far as, you know, if you were able to go look backwards, you know, five years, if that's the appropriate, you know, timeframe and, and, you know, um, we certainly don't need it today because we're not at that point or ready. But, um, I, I think it would be valuable to, to have that information um, as we look towards, um, twelve months from now, you know, and being prepared, what does that look like? Because it appears to me with all the, um, information and, and presentations that we've had, that, um, heading towards a, a self-insured plan is, is likely the best option for Franklin County. And, and, uh, you know, as you showed us earlier on, you know, this year, that, you know, potentially the reimbursements could have been in the quarter of a million-dollar range. Um, it makes a lot of sense to be self-insured.
Unless one of the larger pools presents itself as the better option.
Yep.
I mean, we'll, we'll, we will aggressively look at both of those things.
My question was this. For this year, if we look at WASAC, and they're also using Primera, can we still team up with them, with this larger per, per group, if we can save money? Or are we stuck on our own with Primera this year?
I will have to ask them that. I don't know. I don't know what their timelines are.
Because I think they said they were also working with Primera.
Primera?
I'm not sure, but I vaguely remember in their presentation, they were. So, if we could save money this year, and then if next year we're in position to self-insure,
Mm-hmm.
we can just move right into it. But we're looking at trying to save money in this county.
Yeah. We'll look into that.
Mr. Ganzel.
Yeah, so, uh, when Matt's talking about the reserve, that'll, uh, if you don't have a really terrible, especially first two years, is what I've noticed, um, you'll, you'll end up, uh, not only will you get the rebates on the prescription drugs, but what I've experienced is, you'll, then you have a decision to make on what to do with your reserve. Because it can grow pretty quickly if there's not a lot of catastrophic claims that are made. If the, if, and coupled with like a health and wellness incentive type scenario, I've seen that work pretty well to where the county's financial position, after being self-insured, uh, three years in, I mean, you might have, you might start off with, uh, you know, a couple million bucks in the reserve, and you might have ten or twelve million dollars. And then the decision is, how much more are we going to help, um, uh, employees come, you know, with their individual plans or for their family members? How much are we going to cover on this, that, and the other? And I'm guessing that's kind of an industry standard. If you, that first year especially, if you don't have a huge catastrophic failure, you're usually in pretty good shape by year two, three, and four, right?
Yeah, that's generally what we see. I mean, there's, there's always a downside risk to be aware of. You know, one of our clients, I haven't seen this in my twenty-year career, they just had a rash of large claims that all fell just below the stop-loss threshold. And so, yeah, it was, but they've had several really, really good years too. So, this is just the outlier year. That happens too. So, the, the three options that we really talked about with, um, with the Benefits Committee, that we wanted their, their voices heard on, um, are as follows. Option one is just their preference to take the increase and renew as-is with Primera. And of the, the participants, there was five that actually said that. Option two is to go with exactly what I've laid out, getting rid of the thousand and the two thousand plan, using the thirty-five hundred dollar plan as the basis for, um, marrying the HRA to it to recreate the thousand and the two thousand, using the five thousand plan with the HRA to replace the thirty-five hundred plan and the fifty-five hundred HSA to replace the thirty-five hundred HSA. And nine of the, nine of them said that's what we'd prefer. The third option, which we really didn't spend a whole lot of time on, was to actually use that same five thousand plan as the basis to bring it all the way down to two thousand. And while it does pencil out favorably, saves another four percent, the downside is, that's the one that has the more restrictive prescription coverage. So, most of the people have said, hey, yeah, we like this HRA idea, but we want there to be the top two choices to have that richer prescription option available. Um, and I, I think that made sense. But there were, were several that were really just looking at, you know, cost. You know, four of the, uh, the groups voted for that third option. So, the majority definitely like the HRA idea and, and recognize how much it's saving. Um, and there were a handful that says, no, we just, look, change is hard, right? We all know that. I've often said that the, the best measure of a leader is someone who has their finger on the pulse of how much change their organization can take without breaking. And, uh, and I think this is really reflective of that. You know, some group saying, hey, no, we're, we would rather take the increase and just status quo. That's not invalid. I, I don't want to put out forth that it is, but the vast majority really like the HRA.
Can I ask a couple of questions about this slide?
Yes.
You want to scroll to the top of it? How did they get two votes?
Uh, because there's a, a bargaining group and a non-bargaining group.
Two different groups?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that was what I,
And we just didn't separate it out.
That was what I thought. And then, why did, why did patrol deputies and corrections abstain?
I don't know. I don't know. They said abstain, but they really wanted to emphasize respectfully abstain. So, I want to acknowledge that too. So, why, why they chose not to vote, I don't know.
I just don't know what, I mean, respectfully or not respectfully, I just don't know why you wouldn't have an opinion.
Don't disagree, but I don't have any insight there.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And today you're just looking for consensus of the three commissioners?
Yeah, because we, we've, we've got to start planning for open enrollment. You know, Lizette is just like chomping at the bit to start getting everything ready to go for that. That's why we're on a compressed timeline.
And as I would say, I would be willing to go with the majority of the vote on option two.
That would be my, that would be my opinion.
Oh, I, well, it said on the, just a consensus on the, do you need a motion for this?
Well, because it, we probably do because it would also indicate to Primera what options are being chosen, which would then, they would then generate the renewal in the contract.
That's, that's okay. We can make it a motion. This time we'll entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move to make it the opinion of the board that we adopt option two or plan two as been, that has been presented to us today.
Second.
I meant a motion as second for the commissioners to adopt plan B. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, we'll move forward with that. And if, if the other option presents itself as interesting, we'll, we'll hit the brakes and get back in front of you next week and say, let's quickly evaluate this.
With, with WASAC?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you reach out to them there and.
Yeah, do you, do you have contact information from them you can send me?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great.
It could save us even more money.
Yeah.
Worth a while for the time being because I would really like to see the county become self-insured.
Yeah.
I, I have that same opinion. I'd, I'd love to see recognizing that, that time is short on this round, but, but looking forward. You, I, I thought you described it well as, you know, it takes a number of times, you know, in front of the, of the committee that you've been working with. And we're, we're no different, you know, just takes some time to let it absorb and have an understanding and, and, you know. And so if we were able to, in the next not-too-distant future, a number of months, you know, have a, have a, a simple version of what self-insurance, 12, 12 months from now.
Education.
Education, 12 months out, might look like in, in preparation for that.
Absolutely. That, that'd be a workshop for sure.
Yeah, and that's one thing that I really appreciate our administrator for doing with us is in this workshop setting is starting to, to lay the groundwork for not today, but, but, you know, looking down the road in a number of different ways. And so I appreciate that and, and, yeah, I think that's something that would be helpful.
Absolutely, absolutely. If you'll indulge me briefly, two, two points of levity that just popped into my head in the first presentation this morning and one of your comments earlier. I was so relieved when they were talking about alternative protein sources that it wasn't followed by Soylent Green. You know, I'm sure some people will get the joke.
If they haven't watched that movie, they might want to.
Yeah, they might want to. And then your comments about the, the combine and, and the traffic. It made me think of when I was a teenager, I spent a summer driving tractor for the Oberdings and packing down when the spud diggers did their thing so that the trucks didn't get stuck and then getting them unstuck if they did. And they hired me because they had to fire the other kid that was doing that because he managed to drive one of their, their eight-wheel case tractors five or six miles back to the shop with the parking brake on. So it, it had no brake, no brakes. So they warned me, hey, be wary, the tractor you're driving, as a, you know, 17-year-old kid, it has no brakes. And so out Glade Road, I don't remember the exact intersection, but where their shop was, there was a little bit of a hill coming off the, the, the field. And I would, you know, turn around on the road and I'm coming down that hill and a car turns right on there. I'm like, oh my gosh, what am I going to do because I have no brakes? So I threw that thing in reverse and it just ground to a halt like this. And their mechanic saw it and he proceeded to come out and just chew my butt like you wouldn't believe.
You weren't the second firing in the.
No, but, well, because, because I don't remember if it was Fred or Alan also saw it. And they then proceeded to chew his butt for chewing my butt because he says, would you rather rebuild a tractor or run over a car? Let's think about that. So anyway, I just thought, I hadn't thought about that in decades, but it popped into my head with your comments.
Getting rather interesting out there on the roadways. We need pullouts for.
For sure.
Our machinery so it can get off the road and the traffic can get by, especially during harvests with all these trucks that are fully loaded.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank you all.
Matt, I'd just like to say too that in your presentation, well done. It was very understandable. I really appreciate it. Put it down to the simplest form for me, okay? Because you did a great job.
I appreciate that.
I understood everything that was presented. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I really try hard to remember that I live in this world every single day because it makes perfect sense up here. Doesn't mean that translates to people who deal with this once a year and maybe when they go to the doctor. So I thank you for that comment.
Good job.
All right. Thank you all.
All right, moves this down to Commissioner, Commissioner Administrator Updates. Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Met with Matt Henderson regarding insurance renewals of all things. And kind of one of the things that, the discussion that's been taking place everywhere between all municipalities and local governments is that insurance rates in general, whether it be health insurance or risk insurance is going up. And so I appreciate the out-of-the-box ideas to be able to try to mitigate some of that. You gentlemen know I met with you all to discuss the agenda, the strategic plan and the upcoming budget process. I'd like to put that out there. We're getting there. It's, this year is moving by pretty soon and before long, before you know it, we're going to be in November. And so just make sure everybody's prepared and ready for some longer hearings and some meetings that are coming up. And a big thank you to everybody for getting all the information they needed to get loaded into Gravity and also Tim Anderson, the Auditor's Office, for doing such outstanding work to get prepared for the budget process. Along with multiple other folks, I attended the entrance conference with the State Auditor's Office this week as they explained the process and timelines and what they're going to be looking at. I met with Benton County regarding the Human Services Contract. And I have a copy, gentlemen, for your review. I'm going to just send these down your way and that have track changes on it. I think that it was a worthwhile meeting. I think that there is a potential to move forward if that's what you so desire. And the way that this works now is, is that just in basic terms, I asked about the not being charged on top of the 10% to administer as well as the indemnity piece, indemnification piece. And so the, their county staff is going to take that back to their Board of Commissioners. And I'm taking this to you gentlemen for you to review. And I'm guessing that next week would probably be a good enough time to be able to have enough time to review it, look at it, see if it's something that you're interested in. And it also gives you time to, if you have questions individually, of course, to give me a call if there's any, any issues that you, that you have with it. But I wanted to get that to you. We got a letter of resignation on the Planning Commission. So I'm going to send, or send that down your way. I suppose I could have done that in correspondence, but I wanted to make sure that you were aware. I have sent an email to the County Treasurer and asked if she would be available for a workshop on the 22nd to be able to discuss tax title properties. I know that you gentlemen have discussed quite a bit that you're looking to move some properties if we can that don't make any sense for the county to hold on to if there's no current or future use. Typically, the way that process works, she will check that against, and I don't know if we have anybody here from Public Works, but they'll check it against Public Works to see why the land was originally secured, if there's any interest for Franklin County, if there's some sort of an agreement or arrangement or an easement. If not, then, then there's actually, statutorily, we're, we're bound to, to try to move those tax title properties. And then something I talked about previously, and I've, I've spoken with you gentlemen about, applies to our office now, but I would, I'd like to just have a policy on overtime and, and not having overtime be able to be accrued without prior approval from whoever the department head is. It's just one of those, another area where if we're really looking at trying to, and again, I'm glad, I'm glad that Matt Anderson comes in like this because, and, and talks the way he does about self-insurance and what would be required because it kind of helps and, and focusing the conversation on where we're looking to go. You know, we talk about this with the strategic plan and financial policies, but also we're wanting to make, I think, the best decisions that we can possibly moving forward so that we can go to a self-insurance, so that we can afford a reserve to be able to do that. And it, and what you'll see there too, and, and I think that he'll mention this if we get to this point, there's a competitive nature. It's where all the competition is happening in insurance that I've seen is in the self-insurance market. And then you get the insurance companies competing against each other because they want that business versus just agreeing to automatic renewals that are going to come with huge increases. That's kind of a model of the past, I believe. And I think that relatively, we're going to have to look at that. And so I appreciated when he talked about what it would take and what we're looking at doing through the budget, through the financial policies. We just got a clean audit, you know, from the Washington State Auditor's Office. These are good things. And this is the reason that we're going through these steps and trying to have a strategic plan and trying to adopt policies that make prudent sense is so that we can get through the tough times like right now. Where, and we've talked about this, where there are multiple other counties where the only people in certain offices is just the county or the elected official and no one else because they don't have sales tax revenue generators and they don't have new construction like we do to, that kind of, I mean, really saves our bacon, to be honest with you. We want to get to a position where not only do we have a reserve fund for the self-insurance, but we have a reserve fund just in general for the budget. With that, I will leave it at that. And if you have anything, as always, please just let me know on what you'd like me to be working on.
Commissioner Baumann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a fairly busy week since our meeting last week. Went on the Columbia Valley Center for Recovery site tour. Had Ben Franklin Transit Executive Board meeting. Went to the Chamber of Commerce, hosted elected reception out at the Reach Museum. Shoreline Reconvenance Working Group meeting, WASAC Virtual Assembly, State Auditor's Office entrance audit for 2024 that our administrator just spoke of that he attended as well. Went to a shrub step habitat meeting at TRIDEC. Meeting with the PA's office that I do weekly. Had quite a few meetings this week with multiple different people as associated to nonprofits in our community, from housing to energy services to just a, quite a number of difference. Constantly trying to learn how these different organizations operate that, that use tax dollars to serve the, the people in our community that in various capacities. Met with our administrator a number of times. And our administrator talked about several things that, that I had on my notes to, to talk about. One of them being is, would be helpful if we could get on our calendars when our budget workshops will be so that we can be prepared for those and not have conflicts. Wondered if there had been, we sent a, a letter from the board to State Department of Transportation in regards to Highway 17 and, and wondered if we had had any follow-up, if additional follow-up. Just something that was on my mind. And really the reason that was on my mind is the chairman talked about equipment on our roadways. I was, again, behind a, a string of equipment and in, in a long string of cars when somebody had the opportunity numerous times to pull off and didn't from, from other, passing other roadways. When you can, I mean, certainly when you pass an intersection, there's the opportunity to pull off, to let a string pass and, and didn't take advantage of it. And then I just, I'm not sure how to, to ask people that have every right to use the road to, you know, appreciate what courtesy looks like with other people that also have a right to use the road. I also had on my notes, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how this, what, what this looks like. And so do we need to make an official action of the board? The way that I wrote it down here, and I'm not sure that it's correct, but to stop all overtime unless it is explicitly approved by the department head or the, the department's elected official. What, is that an official action? How would we go about that? That unless it's explicitly approved by the elected or department head, that, that, that we, we're not doing overtime.
Not only approved, but they've got to have it within their own budget, right? Yes. So, Mr. Danzel?
Yeah, some of it, so, yes, as currently, what we operate on is a bottom, bottom line budget. And so when we have our financial policies, it'll help a little bit to be able to establish some control over the process in general. But the way that I understand it, and again, I would ask Council Briggs to, to chime in here. Once a budget is approved, you can spend down all the way through, through whatever the approved budget amount was. But you can, yeah, you can do a policy that would require that overtime needs to be approved by department heads or elected officials. Again, there's a separation there of independently elected officials and if they've already got the money in their budget. It's, you can't really do too much in that capacity, but when you're creating the budget, you can. And so you're talking about going in and talking about the 2026 budget.
It, it would be both. It would be both. You know, if, if there's, if the elected or the department head, you know, says, yes, this is a necessary thing, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask that we take that out of their hands. But, but this is that it not, I don't know. I, I think a policy, maybe ask that you bring, bring a policy to us next week that would, do we pass it next week? I don't know. But ask that you provide us a framework that we can, that we can identify. This, the, we, we've been taking, I believe, some, some good steps of recent with the hiring freeze and some of the things. But the, I'm, I'm concerned as we approach this budget season that, that it's going to be worse than, than, than we want it to be. Or I shouldn't say we want it to be, but it's going to be painful. And, and the, the sooner and the, and the more specific we get about it now, I think the better. And so.
Yes, we, the way the vehicle, I think, would be a resolution. What I'll do is I'll draft a policy and resolution up today and get it over to Council Briggs to take a look at. And then what I would recommend on most policies would be to then kind of intro it in a workshop next week to be taking action the week after. Does that make sense?
It does. It does. Thank you. That, that's, that's helpful. I, I just think that that's something that we need to, to look at and something that would be helpful in that process. And I don't even know how to ask this question. But if we could have a, a review of, of, you know, how much overtime have we used this year? And I guess I'll let you kind of develop what that might look like is, you know, a report of, of how much do we use? Have we used historically or something of that nature? Just so that we kind of have a, a measuring stick. That'd be helpful. And then I already, I already spoke about it just a little bit. But, but how do we communicate with our, with our ag community about, you know, I recognize that we don't have the pull-offs. We've been talking about that. We're working on some, some ideas on how to do that. But in, in the interim, we need to use the, the options that we already have, which is courtesy and pulling over. You know, this last week I watched a, I watched somebody that got impatient and they passed on a, on a, you know, a solid yellow line. And, I mean, it's happened in our community over and over and over, over the years. And when, when, when you're in a piece of equipment that is not moving with traffic and there is an option you need to pull over, you simply need to pull over. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Commissioner Mullin?
Met with the administrator on the agenda meeting. Also attended the tour of the Recovery Center. Had the Greater Columbia Behavioral Health meeting and along with the Long-Term Aging and Care. During the Recovery Center, I believe that their budget, they stated, is up to 40 million now. So leaves me a little curious, curious of how they're going to afford to staff it. But again, I'm just going to say that I think the public needs to know how much money they're spending on the transit, which is 6/10 of 1%. Doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you consider the 1/10 of 1% that we give the Recovery Center equates to about 10 million a year. Am I correct? So that's 60 million we're spending on empty buses. And the Recovery Center, which is much desperately needed, they're going to need some extra funds. So at some point, I think the public needs to be. So at some point, I think the public needs to be aware of what they're spending on the transit, and it should be up to them to vote on it. So I would ask that, again, it be put on the board to bring it forward, to, to put it on the ballot, to let the people decide exactly how much they want to spend on the transit. And if the, the public so declares that they want to spend that much money on the transit, then, you know, I'm all for it. But I heard last week that the transit has approximately 100 million in reserves, you know, and just looking for ways to spend that money. At some point, you have to reevaluate and shift money to where it's desperately needed. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Mullen. And by the way, tomorrow night is the transit meeting, if anybody would like to attend. And questioned why we have not let the people vote on this. It's either up to the Board of Directors to put it on the ballot, or it's up to the people. And if the people want to stand up and say, we want this back on the ballot, I think you might encourage some guys on the Board of Directors to put it on the ballot. Why not let the people have another vote on it? Their claim is, they voted on it once. Yeah, that was a long time ago. A lot of people have aged out and a lot of people have aged in, and they don't like to see their money being wasted. So it's a great opportunity. On the Highway 17, we did receive a letter back from the state. They said they will consider it. We also had other, we had Moses Lake Port write a letter to the state. We had another entity, I believe the city of Moses Lake, write a letter to the state on the same concerns of Highway 17. And yes, on the pullout of the farmers, they now can be ticketed if they're with, if they're, I think, there's six vehicles or more behind them and they don't pull over, they can be ticketed. But with the app, some of the apparatuses that they're pulling, if they try to get off the road and damage the road, then they're responsible for it and they're apprehensive about trying that with some of the machinery that is going up and down the road. But there is already in place fines to be implemented on the farmers if they don't pull over. And I did tell you, I witnessed a truck passing a combine heading south and met a county sheriff on the top of the hill. The county sheriff had to go off the side of the road, but did turn around and that truck was pulled over. And when we went back by after delivering the loader, they were obviously getting a ticket. We have got to stop this reckless driving on Glade Road and pullouts is the easiest, safest means to do it, but the farmers have to use them.
Yeah, there was four, there was four individual locations that, that this piece of equipment could have pulled over. There was, there was two county paved roads that they could have pulled over on, and there was two significant gravel driveway areas, you know, entrance to another farmyard. And, and, you know, when you have four shots at it and you don't take it, there's, there...
Negligence.
Yeah.
It's Columbia Basin Sustainable Water Coalition meeting. A lot of good things happening there as far as the completion of the East High and funds coming from the federal government to do that. The agenda meeting. And I think on that paper, I think what's required here from our electeds and our department head is a signature paper authorizing that overtime. If it's not signed by that department head or that elected official for overtime, then it's null and void. I think that's the way to cure this, is make that department head or that elected official put the responsibility of their signature on a paper authorizing for this overtime. That's the way to take care of that. And if it's not authorized, then it's not, it's not valid.
I'm just thinking of the practicality of administering that or doing that kind of thing.
Just a thought, just to throw it out there. I think that's the way you make them accountable for their employees getting overtime. If they haven't authorized it, how can we pay them for it?
If I could add something on that?
Absolutely.
The, the overtime rules in the state of Washington require us to pay the employees if they work more than the, you know, 40 hours a week. So the, I think the policy needs to be that the, that the managers not permit the overtime, that they don't allow. But once the worker works that time, and that's why we tell our employees, don't be responding to emails at like, you know, one in the morning or something, because you might trigger those overtime requirements.
So, question for you on that. So if employee 3:00 AM works for an hour without authorization, now what?
That could be a problem. The case I'm thinking about is, was for travel time, where the employees were not paid for travel time and they sued the state for that and ultimately found that that, that they were within the course and scope of employment. And so they were entitled to overtime just for like, you know, getting on a plane and traveling. So whether it's authorized or not, we could potentially be on the hook for it. So it, it's something I think managers need to be cognizant of.
Yeah, I think that, bring us some information and, you know, understanding of it would be, would be good.
And Jeff, one more question on, isn't our state pushing for a 36-hour work week now?
I'm not sure, but it, it wouldn't surprise me. I know one county is it, it might be San Juan that's moved to a four-day work week. So it, it wouldn't surprise me if our state, state wanted to do that. But I'm not aware of a statewide push for that.
Thank you. So moves us down to correspondence, and I believe we have District Court temporary hire.
Yeah, so Judge Roscoe reached out to me, and I don't have it right here on me, so that's my fault on this one, asking to rehire a temporary position. So it's the work crew supervisor position, and it's budget neutral. This other, the person that was currently, was in the position was truly a temporary employee, and, and they're looking to bring another temporary employee on. And so I apologize about not having that in front of you here.
This is simply a temporary, replacing a temporary?
Yep.
Is there requested action of the board, or is just letting us know?
They want, their request is that they're allowed, because we're under the hiring freeze to, if they can go ahead and get that other temporary.
So just a motion?
Motion would be great.
So, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request of District Court to be able to replace a temporary with a temporary.
Second.
And a motion second for District Court to replace a temporary employee for another temporary on the work crew to clean up garbage? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to public comment. Anybody for public comment, anybody on the phone?
Highway 17, according to my husband, who's a paramedic firefighter of City of Pasco for 31 years, is the most dangerous highway we have. He would not let me take a job.
Is your mic on? I can't hardly hear you.
Can't hear you either.
Hello? Okay. Highway 17, I want my time back. Highway 17 is the most dangerous highway we have, according to my husband, who's a 31-year veteran of a paramedic firefighter for City of Pasco. He would not let me take a job at Othello Hospital, coming out of the American Heart Association because of it. So, well-founded and well-done. With regard to the innovation of the cog on farming, I think the innovation should be exporting our farming, our products. There's more than enough land in this world to farm, to think that we aren't feeding enough people because, and we have to resort to bugs and artificial meat is absolutely beyond my comprehension. And all the NGOs in between are entrapment for money to go nowhere to the actual project it's supposed to benefit. So that's my formal objection to that presentation or that idea going on. And maybe I don't know enough, but it's what it smacks of to me. Our farmers can definitely give, take what they already know with the amazing computerized vehicles they have and the equipment and help the world feed itself. I just can't understand the thinking there. But with regard to the benefits plan, I do love self-insured. I think you're on the right track. I thank you for the in-depth and the risk you took on Matt to be able to present that. It is a plan that helps the employees plan their own health care, instead of just saying, I've got a deductible, I'm going to do this and do that. They actually have to think about how they're using health care. But they also get the benefit of your care for them, to give them great options and to lower those deductibles. It's, it's a wonderful plan, and I applaud you wholeheartedly. My final comment is, it's come to my attention that, you don't like my public commenting, but you do want interaction from the, the public. I would invite you to have some one-on-ones with me, and there would probably be a lot less public comment. I would invite that. I just contacted Rocky about what was going on in Yakima with pop-up vendors that aren't approved, and it's up that looks like they're tied to the cartel. We have that in our community, too. I'm very active across the state. And with regard to the request for workshop on the constitutional compliance, I think you'll have an equal experience that you've had from Matt from G.R. Moberly. There are 12 counties involved and looking at that. It is the way to reclaim our state by demanding constitutional compliance, because the counties are the ones that formed this state. They came first. You are our first line of legislators. The enabling documents of this state said that we were supposed to be practicing common law. It didn't happen. And to redress grievances is to repair what's been done wrong. I don't care what's happened in the past. I want to see you flourish, so let our state flourishes, and I want you to be a part of it. It's not so much about credit, it's about partnership. I think the day you should worry is when I don't come back. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Is there anybody on the phone?
Caller, you have three minutes.
My name is Denise Dorman, and I live off of Ironwood Road. I'm also aware of the trouble going down Glade Road. I travel it every day, and I've seen the long lines of traffic. And I was advised to call 911 when we have an issue with that. I'd like to invite any of you to drive west on Ironwood Road, about two miles. There's a blind corner going down the hill, and it goes past our property. We also go across the road to get to another portion of our property with machinery and cars. There have been a lot of close calls due to the speeds that people go by there. The neighbors have also, I and the neighbors have lost several animals due to the speed and inattention. Right now, we have a lot of orchard and potato trucks and orchard workers going past our place. And the road is like a raceway to a long stretch going east and west. We've witnessed other cars passing each other or trucks going up and down the hill past our place, and it's a blind corner. Vehicles tend to go out of their lane about halfway over into the other lane, making it, you know, just a half lane as they're traveling. And we've had to come to a complete stop to avoid head-ons there. I did talk to a road person, they did come out and reduce speed, but you know how the signs were taken, they're completely ignored. The neighbors and I have talked, and there has to be a solution before a tragedy happens because there's just been too many close calls. And I would appreciate having somebody check this out or look it out. I know the county is short on funds for road projects, but there just has to be a solution to this. So, thank you very much. Goodbye.
Thank you, Denise. Thanks for listening. Anybody else on the phone? Anybody else for public comment? Takes us down. Do we need an executive session?
Yes, we will, under 4231101I, triple I, potential litigation, 15 minutes, myself, the board, Mr. Danzel, and Ms. Lloyd as well, like present.
And we got to go downstairs still?
Yes.
Can we get IT to remove these cameras above us so that we can stay in here? Please?
You're the commissioner. Tell me if you want to take them out.
All right, we'll adjourn to exec, we recess to executive session for 15 minutes. We're going to go in at 11:03, we'll come out 11:18. We're going to go in at 11:03, we'll come out 11:18. We are back from executive session with no decisions being made. Is there any other business for the good of the county? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. And we'll move right into the workshop, approval of the workshop agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the workshop agenda as presented.
Second.
And a motion is second for the approval of the workshop agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to public comment. We ask that the public comment be on the two workshop agenda items that we have. Is there any discussion? Anybody? Nope. Okay, nobody's coming forward, no phone. Move right into the workshop. Behavioral Health Advisory Committee update presented by Mr. Olson.
Thank you.
Welcome.
The, this is hopefully a quarterly update. I've got two items, the update of the committee's work from July to October and then also circle back around to talk about the field responder program because there's some questions related to that. So I'm looking at the, kind of the 30,000 foot view, the summary of the meetings, we've been meeting July through October. We've updated progress on the Colby Valley Center for Recovery Field Responder Communications. We've talked about service metrics and workforce development for mental health and substance use fields. We are, you know, continuing to collaborate with and address behavioral needs for Benton and Franklin Counties and looking for continued support from the Board of County Commissioners for these initiatives and so hopefully we can improve the communication as such. Some of the, on the, the Center for Recovery construction update, the construction is continuing. We're, expected completion is early 2026. There is probably going to be in March, it, part of it depends on occupancy and also the Department of Health certifying occupancy for the hospital as well. So there's going to be some factors in there that are dependent on other parties, but that's, we're still looking at that timeframe. I think facility tours, if they haven't ended yet, are going to end soon, I think. But there may be still be an opportunity if you want to go there. I was glad to see that a couple of you mentioned that you were able to do that. Comprehensive Health Care is preparing for services. They've, they're preparing to hire the director level program manager, managers and staff ahead of the facility opening. On the contract with Comprehensive Health, the final contract discussions are in, in play, they're looking at operational costs, payer mix and staffing models for that model. I'm just going to drill down on that a bit. The contract is divided into two contracts. There's a startup contract and then there's an operational contract. The startup contract, it says finalized, it, it's near complete. I expect that this week or the first next week that that contract will be completed and opportunity for the commissioners to review that once Benton County has had a chance to meet with them on that. On the operational contract, there is a delay on that. Most of that delay is not in the, the language of the contract, it has to do with the numbers from managed care organizations and reimbursement rates for services. And how that impacts the operational contract is without those numbers in terms of managed care organizations, it's hard to determine the, the percentage mix of what will be covered by third party payers versus operational costs for the counties. And so they're nailing that down and as soon as that is available, we will, again, the same with the contract, we'll be taking a look at that. One of the things that I would say is if out of that, it appears that the operational costs and the payer mix ends up being substantially higher than, than expected, then the Benton County would go back to Comprehensive Health and look at the, how we could restructure the contract, which probably would be a reduction in services, I would guess, so that the numbers are closer to what the expectation was for that contract. The startup agreement is estimated probably approximately 3,756,000, which would cover the first six months of operational costs for the center during the setup phase. There is a phased hiring strategy, which involves obviously hiring the administrative early on, but then also hiring the staffing that are going to be providing services, which includes training and orientation for the operational launch. And also any sort of operational preparation expenses that go along with that. Make sure the facility's ready. One of the things that they're, they're looking at is there's some equipment that is potentially high, high dollar equipment that if it's on the Benton County's responsibility side, then they can maintain that equipment even if we have a different contractor that takes over versus it's owned by the contractor and they take that equipment with them. So there's some, some horse trading on, on that aspect. Looking at the operational agreement, so as we look at this, the reimbursement rates for these managed care organizations is pretty important in order to determine the final estimate in terms of operational costs. I apologize for the, the financial year, it should say financial year 2026. When I did these slides, it was from, I pulled from the original proposal and so the years are a little bit off, but I, I suspect that the numbers are, are similar. So based on the original proposal, in financial year 2026, the estimated costs would be about 50% of the care costs would be covered by third party. And then by financial year 2029, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 70, 75%. Currently, the recommendation of the committee is that the operational costs would be split between Benton County and Franklin County based on population data, which I'm, I'm, my understanding is approximately the 68, 32%. Again, as I mentioned before, if the numbers come back higher than expected, then we would look at a scale back service plan for the operational costs. And then that would be reviewed by the Behavioral Advisory Committee with a recommendation coming back to the commissioners. Let's see, oops. Again, these, these, these should say financial year 2026 and then adjust those numbers accordingly. Looking at the operational costs, and this is again based on the original proposal that was made by Comprehensive Health. So the startup costs, so the final contract, the numbers may be slightly different, but this should get us in the, the ballpark of what, what to expect once those numbers are hammered down. So the- So, the startup costs, uh, three million, uh, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, um, financial year. So, those numbers, that number might be a little bit higher because that's assuming six months. If we open in, uh, May, um, that would be, uh, that would be eight months, right? So, there, that number might be a little bit higher. The, uh, six thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, uh, I'm sorry, six million nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand for that. And then going across, if we're looking at, uh, third-party coverage, um, about three and a half million of that would be covered by third-party, leaving about three and a half million for the county share. And then, uh, broken out by Benton and Franklin Counties, um, there'd be two million three hundred thousand, uh, seventy-two, uh, three hundred and seventy-two thousand for Benton County and one million one hundred and sixteen thousand for Franklin County. And that would be for the, um, operational contract for, um, the, um, Center for Recovery. And then kind of, if you look at it each year, um, the expectation is that the third-party coverage, um, would, um, increase that. And so, um, over time, the expectation would be that the county share would be less. And I, I suppose the reason that's built into this proposal, I, I would guess we'd have to go back to the Comprehensive Health and see why they put that in there. But I would expect as a mental health provider in the community that initially when we open this up, there's gonna be a lot of uninsured people, homeless people that are accessing and, and utilizing these services. And so, um, at, it's gonna take time to build that part of the business out. And so, um, I, I, by year four or five, then, um, the hope is that the third-party coverage would be, um, closer to the seventy percent, um, in terms of how much is covered by that. Before we get on that, any questions on the, um, cost estimates there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lot to digest here. I've been asking for this information for, for, um, as long as I've been a commissioner and this is the first time I've, I've seen numbers. I've put numbers together myself based on the information I was able to glean, not from locally, because I've found, um, a, a pretty, a pretty consistent, um, blockade of information. So, the information I've been able to ascertain from other areas and, and programs that they run. This information is, um, I, I think helpful just because I've been very, very concerned as I've described to my fellow commissioners and to the community that I've seen scope creep. And, uh, as you described in some of your information here, that we're already talking about not being able to afford it, about reducing the services already because of the high cost. And so, I don't know that I have any specific questions at the moment, other than right now, I can't support allocating any funds out of the mental health tax until I have a better understanding of what's going on. I've asked that if there, you know, when we have draft, uh, draft agreement, that I'm able to see that. It's been, um, we announced that Comprehensive was going to run this center, um, well over a year ago. We announced that. And I've asked for the opportunity to have information and, um, and so, um, that's just where I'm at right now. I haven't been able to, to get the information, um, that, that I'm going to need to help me understand, um, the center, how it operates, what the funding looks like. And, uh, this is helpful to, to see that, that, uh, there is some stuff being put together. But, but, uh, I guess I'll, I'll just leave it at that. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
No questions.
No questions. Um, the field responder program, we've had some conversations about that. I'm gonna save that because it's the other presentation that, that I would like to jump into. So, uh, just basically talking about the update on the status and budget funding and, um, uh, whatnot. Community, uh, communications and outreach, the committee is, uh, working on the branding logo and creation so that we can clearly identify the, uh, Center for Recovery, um, looking, working on public outreach activities, including radio spots and, um, community tours and, uh, updates and various, uh, media outlets. The, um, we're hopeful that, you know, there's a, uh, just to get the word out in terms of the reception of what we're doing here in our community. It's a opportunity to, um, sort of put, um, Benton Franklin Counties on the map, so to speak, in terms of what we're doing here, um, and looking very forward to having, uh, an opportunity to address these, uh, very, uh, very significant needs in our community. And so, and then also talking about, um, various strategies in terms of getting the word out to stakeholders. We've had conversations about that. In terms of substance use and mental health services, uh, significant conversations around, uh, tracking patient outcomes. One of the things we want to make sure that, um, as we're doing this, that we are, um, actually having the outcomes that we are hoping to accomplish. So that, that, uh, the accountability that we are providing the services and also addressing the needs that exist in the community. And so, there's conversations around that, um, in things like, uh, emission, um, sources, denials, uh, departures, but also improvements in, um, mental health, uh, status as well as, um, uh, improvement in, in substance use, challenges and whatnot. So, um, the other thing that we want to, uh, look at, uh, going forward beyond the Center for Recovery is opportunities for diversion-type programs, uh, whether that's wraparound services, other areas that are, um, behavioral health needs in the community, um, uh, residential care that would extend beyond a hospital stay. And so, um, those are some of the things that the committee is discussing. We also have, uh, are concerned about workforce development. There's been some collaboration with CBC and WCU and, um, in- increasing the, um, uh, providers that are in our community. Specifically, one that comes to mind is substance use treatment. CBC has their first cohort, uh, going through and they're going to, I think, graduate in, um, June, I believe. Looking at the possibility of doing practicums through, um, the, um, Center for Recovery. Also, the entertaining the possibility of scholarships and to encourage people to go in that, in that field. Also discussions around hiring fairs and partnerships to create, um, a sustainable behavioral health workforce. One of the challenges that we're gonna see as a result of, uh, standing up this Center for Recovery is we're gonna be leeching off of our existing, uh, behavioral health providers. And so, there's gonna be a gap, at least for a little while. And so, we need to figure out ways to encourage, um, people to go into this field. I know that the commissioners that express concerns, um, especially with financial concerns, as the commissioner mentioned earlier, um, we want to make sure that, um, that the operational plans have clarity, feasibility. And we're, we're gonna be, uh, taking a look at that once the, um, contracts have been finalized. That'll be something that the, uh, committee will be reviewing. And then we also want to make sure that we have regular updates, which is why I'm here, and, um, any summaries of, uh, any motions that the committee takes. So, obviously we want to finish the contract for, um, Comprehensive Healthcare. And, um, so that's top-tier. I know that the two commission, uh, the, the two, uh, counties have, um, some concerns related to liability. And so, hopefully we can address that. And I'll talk a little bit more about that field responder program in a moment. I want to work on ongoing community engagement. And we certainly want to work on behavioral health, uh, support for, um, the need in our, our community. And also looking at partnerships with education as well as provider and addressing the workforce need. And so, with that, that's, that's my presentation on the update for the committee's work for the last three months. And then I have another presentation related to the field responder program.
Any questions?
Having not had the opportunity to review any drafts of any contracts and, and having my question stonewalled, um, for as long as I've been a commissioner, this has been billed from the beginning as a one-stop shop. Are we interfacing with, um, our, uh, community partners, our, excuse me, our hospitals? And then law enforcement, um, you know, being billed as a one-stop shop? Is it truly going to be a one-stop shop or is it going to be a selective, um, you know, receiving from law enforcement? Or, um, I just, I just don't know. I don't know what any of that looks like.
So, so accessing the services, um, is going to be sort of like a no wrong door, um, approach? The, the possibility of somebody being self-referred, like walking up to the facility themselves, whether it's EMS or law enforcement as first contact? I think probably the, uh, there may be some logistical and health-related, um, barriers, like if the somebody, if somebody's in a medical emergency, obviously they'd be going to the emergency room to be checked out before being admitted. But it would be, um, this, the, compared to where, what we're doing now, where, whether somebody goes to an emergency room, um, versus going to the county jail, for example. The hope would be to have the opportunity to divert them as long as a crime hasn't been committed into, um, the, um, uh, treatment, essentially. That's, that's the goal. And, and when I say a crime, sometimes there's some, some crimes that'd be like, you know, disorderly conduct or something like that. But, um, that probably would be overlooked if there was a identified mental health need or substance use issue.
Yeah, I appreciate, I, I do appreciate that. Just, um, didn't know if there's, if, if there's, if that's a part of the, the contract that, you know, that identifies that, you know, the center will receive, you know, in truly the, the form of a one-stop shop. Another question is, um, you indicated that tours are gonna be stopping. We, we received that information a while back and I, I asked, you know, what, what, I've been pretty faithful about attending those and they said that I believe tours were gonna stop maybe, maybe now. I was at one last week. Do you know why that, that we're gonna?
Um, I think the, the, once the, um, provider is moving in, they thought that the, uh, tours would be disruptive to that process. I think that's, it's not a, a discussion or decision that the committee made, though.
I, I, I can appreciate that. I've talked about scope creep a number of times. It, way back in the, in the beginning, um, and I don't remember where to attribute this, what my belief was that it was gonna be around sixty people running it. But then we were told, um, back a, a few months that, you know, believed it was gonna be a hundred. And now, um, I have the Columbia Valley Center for Recovery Comprehensive site up here and it says now they're expecting it to, to take about a hundred and fifty. Or it says, this is a direct quote, "We will build a team of around a hundred and fifty people." Knowing roughly what it costs, um, in an average sense, um, these operational costs that was presented here, just those numbers don't seem to jive to me, but I didn't, I don't really have, I don't have any background context to be able to.
Sure.
The only thing that I have is, is, you know, Franklin County employment. And, you know, to average that out and, and, and project it onto these numbers, it just doesn't, doesn't jive and I just don't know what to do with that.
Yeah, I, I think that that, that's a, a great question. I wonder if on that website they're including, um, part-time. I don't know that that would be a hundred and fifty FTEs. So, um, I could be wrong on that. But, um, the numbers that I, uh, presented today are from the original proposal that Comprehensive Healthcare made to the committee.
Thank you for that. And then can you give us any update on Phase Two?
So, you, I assume you're talking about, uh, residential care?
Yes.
Okay. In that respect, I know that the Benton County, in terms of the physical plant, has moved forward on, um, building that out and getting grants for that. In terms of decisions, um, from the, um, Behavioral Health Advisory Committee in terms of who would be operating that and whatnot, there, there hasn't, really hasn't been any discussion on that yet. And so, I imagine that that we would be moving on to that. One of the reasons that we kind of delayed as a committee to move forward on that discussion is we wanted to nail down how much the Center for Recovery was going to be, what the operating costs were gonna be before we moved on to other, um, initiatives.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then you made it, made a comment about, um, insurance. I don't remember exactly how you framed that, um, insurance and the, and the liabilities. Could you speak to that just a little bit more?
Um, so, um, that's in my next presentation?
Okay.
Is that right if I come back to that?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll move into the next.
I don't know how to maximize this window. There's a trick, I'm sure. There we go. Shift or Control L?
Yes.
All right, I'll remember that next time. All right, so, um, on the field responder program, um, I thought it would be useful just because some of the conversations, I feel sometimes we're talking past each other to do sort of a, a timeline, um, on, on this particular initiative. In 2023, um, the, um, we started talking about, um, having a field responder program. And, in October of that year, uh, the Behavioral Health Advisory Committee, um, decided, determined that there was a need for this field responder initiative. And then, um, November ninth, um, it was confirmed that Benton County would take the lead agency with that and Franklin County would be a subscriber for that program. At the time, my assumption was that that would be brought back to the commissioners, um, by the county administrator. I'm not sure that that actually ended up happening, um, but that was, that was the plan at that time. We finalized the request for proposal, um, and, um, the subgroup was created to evaluate that, um, in December. There was only one respondent for the field responder program, that was Comprehensive Healthcare. And, um, we, um, we looked at, um, we, there was a delay in that in that we wanted to see if there was any other, uh, request for proposals, so we decided not to open it. And, basically hearing none, we, uh, went with the Comprehensive Healthcare, uh, proposal. And the committee approved the drafting of contract and, um, looked at, uh, what, what would go into that contract. And based on that, then in towards the end of 2024, um, Benton County set the contracting template to Franklin County and reviewed it, um, towards the end of 2024. Somewhere between January and June, the contract language was proposed and reviewed. There was an inter-local agreement that was proposed. And then the, the counties raised the issue of liability concerns. And so I think that's where we stalled on this process. And so the, currently, we're just kind of stuck. We're kind of in limbo in terms of moving forward with that. I do believe that the Benton County is going to move, move ahead with the field responder program regardless. It just wouldn't be available to Franklin County if, if they moved forward with that on their own. And so looking at, I do have, if the commissioners would like me to, why the committee is making this recommendation to the county commissioners. I'm prepared to present on that if that's something that you want. But before we move on, any questions on that timeline?
Questions?
So please correct me, anybody that's familiar with this. But as far as I'm aware, we have never been presented in any, in any form. I have not been in any form presented with any of this information, as far as I'm aware. So I, I know that there is conversation about a field responder program. As far as I'm aware, I have never received any documentation from a draft contract to what it is and how it operates. As far as I'm aware, I have zero.
I'm, I'm with you on that. I'm not aware of any draft document that was circulated to my office. I'm going to look and see, it could have been my predecessor who reviewed something and had concerns and just didn't share that with me. But this is kind of news to me. So I'm, I'm looking to see if I can find that draft field responder agreement because I'm not aware of what it entails or what the concerns were.
Is this, would this replace the, the group, one of the groups? I know that there's numerous of them, but like the recovery navigators, is this like a replacement for that group? Or it would be an addition to, or I just don't have any idea?
The, it would be an opportunity to have people respond on scene to EMS or law enforcement if they came into contact with an individual that appeared to have mental health issues or substance use disorder issues. That way you could have a, a mental health professional, substance use professional do an evaluation, determine the appropriateness of them being, you know, what the appropriate placement would be for that individual. There, a while back, there, they had kind of embedded mental health workers that went along with law enforcement and whatnot. It would be similar to that, but it'd be separate from it. And we'd want to make sure that there was good handoff in terms of, you know, call to scenes and, and response times and whatnot with that.
So do we no longer have any, any first response with law enforcement? Is that no longer in our communities any?
Yeah, current, currently that, my understanding in talking with EMS and, and law enforcement that have participated on the, on the committee is that currently their options are jail or hospital or, you know, letting them continue to cause disruption.
When we first started discussing this, I thought that the law enforcement, if they judged him as that this was a one-stop center, they could bring him to the facility. Is that not going to happen now?
Um, no, this, this would be like a, somebody in, that would come out to a call.
Right.
As opposed to bringing them to the, the center. It's, in a sense, it's sort of a, to beef up the crisis response services that are already in, in existence. So a lot of times, I think the EMS or, or law enforcement, they come across somebody and they're, they're in the field with them for an extended period of time, trying to figure out what to do with this person, right? And so a field responder would have the opportunity to actually go to the person, make a determination. And then, you know, if it was transport to the, the center, that would be appropriate. If they needed, you know, medical care, obviously they would be, EMS would be making that decision. So, so it's just an opportunity to do that outreach in that respect.
So my question is, is law enforcement then would not be able to transport them to this facility? They would have to get the field responder there to make the determination?
Um, I don't believe that that would be a roadblock to, if the law enforcement made a decision to bring them to the crisis response.
Seems like, it seems to me as if we're putting layers and layers of employment here. I mean, these law enforcement officers, they know when somebody is tweaking out or they're having problems and issues, they know where they need to take them.
Actually, it was law enforcement that was really pressing the field responder program in our committee. I would say that they were the most vocal in terms of this being a need.
No more questions?
The, the next section is on what the need is. I don't know, the commissioners would like me to go through that.
Sure, this is all new information for me.
So looking at current gaps in crisis response, we have overuse of emergency services. And so law enforcement is having contacts with behavioral health crises. And, and so there's inefficiencies. There's potential trauma that occurs with some of these interactions. We, we have a county does a mental health, so if somebody's going to be detained for mental health issues. So we do have those team in places, but other type of mental health or behavioral health situations, there's, there's not a lot of specialized crisis teams that can respond to those circumstances. And without that sort of proper crisis response, the initial contact, then what ends up happening typically is either escalated situations or repeated crises. And, and I would say even in some cases, in the, in the worst cases, where there is a lack of response to somebody that's in crisis, that they end up in a situation where significant bodily harm can occur, including suicide. And so having somebody there that can respond to the individual in crisis is good for their, their treatment and, and long-term recovery. Currently, non-emergency behavioral health crises, divert police, fire EMS from true emergencies, lowering efficiencies that way. It's a strain on dispatch systems. And having a lack of these specialized teams leads to ineffective and costly emergency handling. And I think it also increases uses of emergency rooms and reduces the public safety outcomes. And so one way to think about this with the team that would go out is, it's sort of the network of providing behavioral health services that have been, for the most part, absent from Benton Franklin Counties. And, and sometimes these, these issues can be resolved with a conversation and a phone call in, in the community as opposed to having them admitted into emergency room or having to go to jail because of not knowing where to put them, but they're causing a disruption. And I would even say, even with the crisis center, there's going to be some expenses because I imagine that whoever lands at the crisis center is going to spend at least 24 hours there. The average cost of hospitalization, I'm guessing, is somewhere between $2,000 and $3,000 per day. So if you had a crisis team that went out there, spent an hour or two with the person, came up with a plan, you're going to have some cost savings in that respect as well. So it, it's, it just makes sense to meet people where they're at in that respect. The, the, the opportunity to have some rapid intervention, a lot of times when people are in crisis, there is an increasing delay in terms of getting an intervention in place. I have heard of situations where somebody might spend, you know, a day or two in, in the hospital, for example, before they're able to finally access the services that they need. It, having trained professionals that would be willing to do this can lead to a quicker de-escalation of, of the mental health crisis or behavioral health crisis. And that de-escalation then would lead to a reduction, I would expect, of incarceration of individuals that really, the jail would be an inappropriate place for them to be. So overall, I'd say that the, having this sort of opportunity to meet people where they're at decreases the strain on the system. And I think it improves outcomes for behavioral health crisis. A bit redundant, I apologize for that, but I think it's, it's worth repeating. So if we don't have a field responder, it, it does lend itself to the criminalization of mental illness. And so I can think of a circumstance that happened, oh, I don't know, probably 12 years ago. But it stuck in my mind because of, of what, what happened is we had an individual who had clear mental health issues that needed help and ended up with a felony assault of a police officer because he was throwing quarters at the officer. And so that would be obviously an extreme example. But, but the idea is if we had a field responder that could come and kind of talk this guy down and determine like, oh, who's your psychiatrist, who's your case manager? You could have an intervention that would avoid having a person with mental illness go to jail as a result. And I think earlier we catch crisis, it reduces the trauma as well as increases the recovery. Looking at the best practices, I would say that the challenges that we face with behavioral health, both on the mental health as well as substance use, is not something that's going to likely decrease in our communities. As the population grows, that, that need is going to increase. And the existing crisis teams are stretched to the point where they're not able to meet the needs in a timely manner in the community. And so they, they do a bit of triaging. So like the, the ones that are, the, the most urgent get the attention first and those that are less urgent get sort of backburnered. And, you know, the longer that gets pushed out, the more that, that there's potential that that would escalate. And so this helps kind of beef that up. And I think also it just helps with the broader public health and safety objectives for our community. And so I think it's, it's best practices for that. Looking at the proposal, the proposal that Comprehensive Health would be, the behavioral health clinicians and peer counselors would be operating from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. to address behavioral health calls. There'd be training and onboarding for the individuals that are providing that. There'd be risk assessment, dispatch communications to ensure that they have effective responses. The original proposal, the annual budget was between 876,000 and 960,000 for the operational costs. They did have in their initial proposal, a care coordinator that would be $92,000. That would be split then between the two counties at that, you know, based on population. In terms of tracking outcomes, we would track the ER diversions, repeat calls, response times, demographics to improve, and then other data to improve behavioral health outcomes. That would be the, the intent behind that. I think that's my last slide in terms of what the, the summary is of the proposal. That contract has already been, my understanding, sent to the county. There ought to be an inter-local agreement somewhere in there. And like I said, my understanding was that the hang-up at the time, again, that would have been first part of this year, I believe, was a discussion around liability.
Yes, Mr. Danzel.
I just wanted to announce it because I don't know if everybody got the email. But we originally had scheduled today at 12 o'clock noon, elected officials and department head meetings. I had moved that back a week because I wanted to give Mr. Olson the chance to finish up. And then also, we have a closed session that should last about 15 minutes, I'm hoping, somewhere along. Maybe, maybe a little bit longer, so. Just wanted to give that heads up for folks. I saw a couple of people maybe wandering in and.
So we postponed the department head elects till next week?
Correct, and I'm sorry to interrupt.
All right, questions, commissioners?
Just a, just a comment. Mr. Chairman, your, your question is, is still where my question lies today. This seems to be a, an additional layer or an overlap of what my understanding is. The Columbia Valley Center for Recovery is meant to be in the way it's intended to operate, as far as my understanding is. But understand when I say that, this is the first time I've, I've seen this information. I've asked staff to do a barracuda search in our email system to see what correspondence that we should have had in the past. And just for numbers, at 32%, the proportional share that Franklin County would be responsible for with this field responder program is approximately 337,000 in a yearly basis.
Is that including the care coordinator at position?
That would include the care coordinator position.
Yeah, it just seems like the costs are just adding up on this higher and higher.
I, I just don't know what, 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 what this does.
And I really, I haven't seen any of this information, no emails or anything on my email. A little disappointed in the lack of communication here with Franklin County on this whole situation.
That's why that I've asked staff to, to work on and, and give us an understanding if, is there something that we missed in, in receiving something along the way. I've expressed my frustration at not being able to get information and that was demonstrated today. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. So with that, is there public comment on this situation? Anybody? Anybody on the phones?
I do not feel that we understand where the funds are going. I'd almost like to ask for an audit. I want this to be a part of our, our communities. As far as the, I can just tell you what happens in rural medicine after being a doctor's wife in Deer Park. The doctors are on call. So the people that are working at that facility 24/7, I think it's redundant to have extra people in the field. They should be on call to go out as needed and keep those costs down. As for trauma care, Franklin Graham, another group that I worked with a couple of years ago, they had training for trauma care. And the people from the churches were done on a volunteer basis. Originally Cadillac and Lord's funded those extra responders to go out there and help. But when you've got paramedic firefighters on the same scene as the police, you got a lot of evaluation there. And so I really would encourage for this to fly and support our community. And I mean no offense, I am supportive, is that you really need to really review and give us hard costs. I also want to know exactly how the, the data tracking is because I want to know that it. it is tracking not just for the center and what it wants, but it's transparent for the taxpayers who are funding this to know that those, this is what's happened before. And I'm not saying it's happening here. And this is hard to hear, it's hard to say. But sometimes they track numbers that benefit their facility. And my dad was a chaplain for the fire department and for the police department. He was always out on these calls as well. And I think that our community, if they want this, there needs to be a little more outreach. You know, large churches like Bethel, Calvary, even small churches have people in those congregations just needing to be doing something in the community that supports what's going on. Retired firefighters and police, it's not good for them to sit and not have anything to do. But it's good for them to have a kind of an option on their time for their mental health. And because of the depth and of experience and knowledge, they're good people to tap. So I'll leave that with y'all, thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Sorry if I dress up.
Go ahead.
But part of the reason that the commissioners set up the behavioral health advisory committee, and they do have EMS representative, health representative, mental health, people from the community, is so that there is that sort of expertise in terms of, you know, evaluating what is needed, but also as a follow-up to evaluate the performances of these various programs. And so, I think there's always an opportunity to come back and revisit, are the programs doing what they say they're supposed to be doing? And if they're not, then as a committee, coming back to the commissioners and saying, our recommendation to update the plan is to do this. I hope that the behavioral health advisory committee can still work with the commissioners in terms of informing you about what the best decisions are going forward. And admittedly, there's been some communication difficulties and assumptions, and I will take responsibility for that part. But I did go back through our minute notes, and there were very clear expectations that these things were being brought back to the commissioners. And if it didn't happen, I can't take responsibility for that because I was told that it was happening. So, and I've been on this committee from the beginning. So, anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. I do think in terms of data tracking and outcomes, we're in agreement that we want to give useful data to the commissioners and the community in terms of, are we making good use of the county dollars? And so that is very much a priority for our group. We do not represent comprehensive health. We're here to advise the commissioners as to what the best course of action is.
Okay. Do you, do you have a recommendation for me of how to get information? I've been a commissioner for, I think roughly 20 months, and I've been very unsuccessful in getting data. For me, my process is I'll read through, you know, an example is today, read through and I intake the information, and then a lot of times I have to read it a second time for it to start to set in. And I've asked, you know, numerous times, you know, when drafts come out that I have an opportunity to review so that I can begin the learning process of an understanding of what it is, and have had zero success to date of getting any of the drafts in my hands. And, you know, an example is, it's my understanding, not from written information, but from what I'm hearing, is that Benton County wants Franklin County to indemnify them for a portion of, you know, some of the operations that will take place. And I don't even know what we're supposed to indemnify for because I don't have any measure or understanding of the way that this will operate.
I think in terms of the legal and by-county agreements, I would say that it's probably best if that goes through the county administrators because we're here to make recommendations in terms of what we believe is the best use of the behavioral dollars as opposed to the legal aspect of operating and by-county. So I think that would be it. If it's something of the committee's work, you know, please feel free to contact me. But also, all of the committee minutes are public available. All the recordings of our meetings are publicly available. So if you wanted a more in-depth dive, I think that would be a good place to go.
So does the committee not review and make recommendations on, for instance, the process that's underway now of the operational contract between comprehensive and Benton County? Is that not a part of the committee's purview?
Yeah, I think that the committee has reviewed the original proposal of the comprehensive healthcare and made recommendations in terms of what types of things ought to be in the contract, which then has been developed since Benton County is going to be the holder of the contract, has gone into, I'm assuming the language has gone into the contract. But in terms of making recommendations about the wording or the legal arrangements, we have not been involved in that aspect, just generally in terms of what the expectation from a behavioral health standpoint. Does that make sense?
I understand. I just, I feel like I'm at a loss. I'm trying to guess my way into good decisions.
Sure.
You know, absent regular updates from the Mental Health Advisory Board, absent being able to, you know, review documents and have an understanding of what the structure is. So, you know, the only thing that's been available to me is what I'm able to glean by asking questions when I'm on a very generic and high-level, you know, walkthrough of the facility and, you know, asking questions and trying to learn by osmosis.
And certainly whoever's providing the tour may not have that level.
Oh, and I certainly understand that. Yeah, I understand that. I just, my only option has been by osmosis because I haven't had any other.
Commissioner Dan, Mr. Danzel, you had something?
BJ, you'll remember this. That's why on the communication front, it was my recommendation to do it in front of the entire board, and so I appreciate you being here. And the reason that that becomes important is twofold. Number one, you get into, you know, if you're only having one commissioner or myself involved, for example, it becomes like two things. Number one, are we looking at a serial open public meeting violation because I'm talking to all more than one commissioner about the same topic? And number two, I'd combine that with a telephone game when you're a kid. You know, we stand in a circle and by the time you go around. I really believe that most of this, almost all of the hard feelings would be nipped in the bud if we could just get regular in-person updates here so that the entire board of commissioners, because I think what you heard today is you didn't hear just one, you know, one member say that this is news to them, or two members, you heard all three and the, you know, the county chief, civil, deputy prosecuting attorney. So I really believe that's the sweet spot. I just wanted to put that in front of you gentlemen. I think it's having folks come here and give a report to the board as a whole rather than trying what we've been trying.
All right. Well, hopefully we can get some more clarity of the situation in the future.
Is there anything that the commissioners would like me to take back to the committee?
Yeah, we want clarity. We really want hard numbers. And I need more explanation of this because I was in the thought process that when an officer came across somebody that was having issues mentally or drug addiction problems, this was where they took him over and dropped him off. We didn't have other people showing up to the situation for analysis, but they were taking them there for the analysis. Now we're talking about doing it in field. It's, to me, it's just compounding the cost of what we're trying to do here.
I think that in terms of cost savings, I know that that's a concern for you. I would say that having a professional respond in person to a person in crisis, if they can divert a hospitalization, is going to be a cost savings in that respect. So the cost savings from this particular fields responder program has to do with that because as soon as you admit them in the hospital, you're going to have at least 24 hours, maybe even longer. And if there's an alternative to avert that, then you're going to save costs that way.
Hypothetically, though, if Fentanyl's involved, they're not going to be able to take them to that facility. They're going to have to take them to the hospital. Yes. So the officer who is trained in drug addiction would be obvious to that effect, and he would be, instead of waiting for a first, for a care responder to show up, would already have them transported to the hospital. We might be creating another problem here, waiting for the care officer to show up and somebody dies, it's a situation. Then what are we going to have on our hands?
I would say any medical issue would supersede anything that the field responders would have to say.
There's just so many situations I could throw out there, and I think we need clarity. We got to have clarity of this whole situation, and to me, it's getting almost confusing to the point of who's going to be responsible for the situation.
So if you could, Commissioner, that would help me to, because I don't know that I have a clear idea of what you're seeking clarity on. If you could write down some questions, and then I can come back and address those questions for you?
I think we can do that as a whole. We can, with our administrator, we can formulate our questions as a board, and we'll get them together.
That would be great, yeah. And then Brian, I guess you could bring those. Might be too quick for tomorrow's meeting, but...
Yeah, we won't be able to put it together by tomorrow. Absolutely.
Olson is saying is that these field responders have specialized skillset that may differ from law enforcement, and that coupled with the fact that someone who is on drugs or under the influence can sometimes, the presence of a police officer can sometimes escalate And it takes the officer out of the field where they could be investigating other crimes. There's some value there. Yeah, I think sort of exploring, you know, what is a specialized skill that the field responders have and what role will they serve in conjunction with law enforcement needs to be?
Yes.
And my mic was off, so none of the public heard that.
Say it all over again.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Olson. And now we're going to, we opened it up for public comment. We've already had public comments, so if there's any other business for the work session, workshop, we'll adjourn the workshop and move into a closed session.
Could we have just...
Five-minute break?
Throw a five-minute break.
Five-minute break.